Good evening. I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole meeting for Tuesday, All members are present but Counselor Parker, and she advised us that she is on her way. She was running a few minutes late. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Murawski.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor O'Brien?
I did attend the CARG meeting, which was very interesting. A lot of things were discussed. One of the things that was discussed was the cutbacks on the part of DOT. I went this morning for a very encouraging meeting, the presentation from Electric Boat, looking at a very good future for Groton. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
I did get a call from Alice Foley, who felt that their neighbors are encroaching on the road and getting their things too close so that they can't properly plow the road, and she had several different things, but she's very concerned with what's happening on Park Road.
Counselors Perry?
I received the same phone call.
Thank you. I received an email from a gentleman concerned with the vote that we took regarding the easement on the Boulder Heights property, and I just wanted to clear up a few misconceptions. There was indeed public discussion of the proposed swap, and it took place at a Committee of the Whole as a referral on October 19 of 2016. It was discussed in Committee of the Whole on October 25, 2016, and then the town council acted on it on November 1 in 2016. There were at least three articles that appeared in the New London Day dating from June of 2016 through October of 2016 that addressed all of these issues. But I would say thank you for sending the email to us, and we encourage constituents to contact us with their concerns because we're happy to clear up any misconceptions that might be out there. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to do was to -- Counselor Parker is here. Counselor Parker, did you have any communications you'd like to share?
No, not just what you may have already.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer the condolences to the Capeen family. Jody Capeen was a former RTM member, and she was a retired teacher from Groton Public Schools. Her husband also served on the RTM, and she passed away quite unexpectedly this past week, and we'd just like to extend our sympathy to the Capeen family and her friends as well. Approval of minutes. 2018-0012. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make motion.
Moved by Counselor Schmidt, seconded by Counselor Atwater. Is there any discussion on the minutes of the January 9, 2018 Committee of the Whole? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. We have no unfinished business, so we will be moving on to new business. And I believe that we are skipping 2018-0015, correct? Okay. So we are on to 2017-0226, Superintendent of Groton Public Schools update, and this is a standing referral.
The financial assistant one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please excuse me. I don't have a number for that.
2018-0020.
Say again, 2018?
-0020.
0020, thank you. And this is Financial Assistant One, purchasing?
Yes.
And we have Finance Director Cindy Landry, and I've been asked by the media specialist to request that you please use the microphones. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Yes, I'm here tonight to request approval to fill a Financial Assistant One position in the purchasing. This position just recently came open due to a resignation from that employee. I'd like to give you a little background on purchasing. It has two divisions, a purchasing agent and the financial assistant one, and as you know, this division is responsible for puring all the goods and services for the town. It prepares all of the bids, the requests for proposals, and the requests for qualifications. The division also maintains a capital asset system, which is required for the audit, mailroom oversight, negotiating, monitoring, and maintaining all of our leases. It maintains and updates insurance certificates to make sure that anyone working on town property has the proper coverage, and also handles disposal of surplus and obsolete equipment. Now, without this position, I do have a new purchasing agent. I think most of you knew she's been in about a year, and she's brought to the town some great new ideas from where she came, and she had some programs that she wants to implement. She did revise our credit card policy, excuse me, our credit card program so far, and is looking at other ways to streamline the division and the town in for cost efficiencies. So, and also she's looking to implement a P-card program to eliminate our current, just American Express card. So without this position, a lot of the duties that this position does, which you'll see on my memo, that this position handles, would have to fall to the purchasing agent. And a lot of the administrative duties, the tracking, just probably would not, there would not be sufficient time to do this. I really feel that the workload in that division, because it works for townwide purchasing in addition to the leases and the mailroom responsibilities, that the workload really warrants filling the position. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions? Counselor Schmidt?
So this is not a new position, it's simply filling one that has become vacant.
Yes, that's true. Counselor Murawski?
Cindy, was this position vacant, and you didn't fill it because of the hiring freeze?
No, this position was filled, and actually has only been filled for a short period of time. I had, this position was always filled, and the person that had it prior to this person was promoted to the accounting division, and that's how the vacancies came up. But it has been, it's always been in the budget, and it's always been filled position.
And we?
It's only since the, this recent resignation that it has not been filled.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Atwater?
We received an email from John Burt, the town manager, saying that he recommended not filling the library position because he was thinking of adding. Now, is this the position?
Nothing to do with each other. They're totally separate things. The library one has been open for quite some time, and as we get into the budget, that's one that I'm looking at as part of the budget. This one is absolutely needed, and pays for itself.
But this, but this isn't the one that you're thinking of adding for the next year?
Well, I'm not looking at adding any positions. I'm looking at eliminating positions, but this one is needed.
Maybe I misunderstood the email. I'm sorry.
Counselors Perry?
I move that we approve the request to fill the Financial Account One position, purchasing position.
Second.
Moved by Vice Perry, seconded by Murawski. Did you have comments as well?
No, it's pretty obvious. It's a position that's always been in existence. It's not a new item in the budget, and it's a necessary function. I think it's pretty obvious we should go ahead with it.
Counselor Parker, and then O'Brien? No?
So can you continue on with the discussion? You just said it paid for itself?
I mean, by savings through purchasing. If you didn't have that, you wouldn't have the time to seek the better deals and to do all that that position does. It's necessary. These positions save the town dollars. They do.
And you mentioned they help in the mailroom?
Yes, mailroom. The mailroom falls under the purchasing division.
I beg your pardon?
The mailroom duties is overseen by the purchasing agent, and this person also takes a turn in the rotation in the mailroom.
How many people take rotation in there?
Well, we had four, now we have three.
At one point, there was a position, is that right?
Right.
And then it got eliminated and divided up among different people.
You might recall, back in 2010, the purchasing division had three employees, one of which was the mail courier, but that position was shifted over to the Parks and Rec Division and was eliminated out of finance.
Is there any other discussion on approving this position? Or approving the filling of this position, not a new position? Seeing none, all those in favor of authorizing the manager to fill this position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On to 2017-0226, Superintendent of Groton Public Schools update, standing referral. So we have Dr. Grunier, and we have almost the full board.
Do you mind? That's how I made it happen.
Chairperson Watson, Board members White, Robertson, Ackerman, Newsome, and Jelena are all with us this evening. Thank you for coming on.
It's our pleasure.
Paul, good evening.
Good evening.
I thought that I would try to do three things tonight and hopefully answer any questions that you have. The first one has to do with the Alliance District. I know people have been concerned about exactly how that designation was calculated. As you know, in November, Groton was identified as an Alliance District, and there's been a fair amount of investigation on our part to figure out exactly how and why that happened and what the consequences are. So if you turn the paper, you'll see that, the first thing is, all districts, not Alliance districts, all districts in the state of Connecticut are given an index score on 12 indicators, and they are, as you can see, the first two are academic measures, one academic scores, one academic growth. It's a targeted growth, which I'll get to in a minute. The assessment participation rate, schools have to have at least 95% participation in this. State cares a great deal about attendance, and so they measure chronic absenteeism, which is defined as 10 or more school, days out of school for a child. And then there's a whole section in our indicators about taking post-secondary college and career-ready courses, passing exams in those areas, and then they do three things for graduation, looking at the percentage of students who are on track for graduation as ninth graders, those who graduate four years, a cohort rate of those students, and then even if they don't graduate in four years, they follow up for a six-year cohort rate. And then there are post-secondary entrance rates, physical fitness, and arts access. So it's kind of a holistic look at the children. So we, since I last met you, I went to Hartford and met with the Alliance office at the State Department of Education, and they provided us this information. So the first thing is, every district, as I said, that includes a local and regional school districts, but it excludes semi-autonomous, like a Dowd Academy, it's like NFA and so forth, but all the districts who are regular regional or regular or regional school districts, and those districts that are greater than 1,000 students. So there are some districts that are quite small, and so they're not considered as part of this Alliance District program. And then they basically rank order all the districts in what they call the District Performance Index, the DPI. This year, there were 30 districts that had then completed the five-year, once you're in, you're in for five years. Three of the districts were able to achieve scores that had them be eligible to be removed. But when districts are removed, it has a significant financial impact, significant detrimental impact, millions and millions of dollars. So they lobbied to stay in, and so Groton was picked up as one of the three districts that were added. Unfortunately, as I said last time, the, although each of the Alliance districts gets a few million dollars, a few like three or four million, to do the Alliance programs that I'll talk about in a minute, the legislature did not allocate any money to Groton. We have to do all the Alliance program efforts, but we didn't get any money. And then the State Department, fortunately, out of their own, this is not from the legislature, but the State Department allocated $600,000. A typical grant for a district our size would be about $3 million, and I know Senator Summers, Representative Conley, and Bella Cruz have put in, I think frankly it was an oversight. They simply forgot to include Groton in the language. But if you turn to the most important page, it's the third page, and that is what our score is, our index score. So an index score is, of course, a score, that's not a percent. It's a score based from 0 to 100. So you take the children's scores on statewide reading tests, and the scores run from about 2,000 to about 2,500. Then, of course, you take the SAT scores, which run from 200 to 800, and what they do is they put the high ones high, and the medium ones medium, and the low ones low, and so each of those gets an arithmetic index. So you can compare SAT scores to third-grade reading scores. So here's how it broke down for us. The first two measures, 1A through F and 2A through D, are academic measures. So, and the target, by the way, is 75. The state would like to see the Alliance District at least at 75. So when we look at our ELL, ELA, English Language Arts Performance, we scored, our students scored 67.2, the state average was 67.7. But for our high-needs students, which includes all free and reduced students, free and induced lunch students, ELA, ELL, English Language Learners, and special education students, those deemed to have high needs, our score was 59.4, and the state average was 56. Our math scores were 62, the state 61. Our high-needs students were 54, state average was 49. Our high-needs science students were 58, the state average was 57. Our, I'm sorry, that was all students. Our high-needs students were 52 in science, state average was 47. And then when you go to percent of a target, they give us a targeted growth so that if the student meets the target over the five-year period, that the district would be deemed to have the target. That is to say, you don't have to go from where you are right now to meeting the target in one year. It's a step thing. But, so the question is, we, our students achieved 61% of the targeted growth in English, 63 for the state. We, 57 for our high-needs, the state 58. Math for growth, ours was 65, state was 65, and the math performance for high-needs students was 59, and the state was 57. So those are the pure academic measures. The next measure is chronic absenteeism. They look at all students. The goal is to have no more than 5% of the students in the district have 10 or more absences. We had 11. State average is 9.6, so that's in area focus. Our high-needs students had 15.8. The state average was 15.6. Nevertheless, we don't want 15% of the students to miss 10 or more days. These are, the next series of indicators, I must confess, we have to do some research on it because I really don't understand. The percentage of students taking CCR, College and Career Ready, we had 52, according to the state. State average was 67. We do not have only 52% of our students taking college and career classes. I really don't understand what that is, but I'll research it and I'll get back. The percentage passing exams, I think we have a better handle on that. We only had 34%. These are AP, IB exams. The state average was 40. On track for graduation, we were 90. The state average was 85. The four-year graduation was both 87. Six-year graduation, 75, state was 78. Post-secondary entrance was 67. State average was about 72. In terms of physical fitness, we had 97% of our children take the test and 41% passed. The state had 89% and 50% passed. And then this last measure is arts access. It's only a secondary measure. We, of course, have extensive arts programs in our K through 8, but this is only at the high school. We were 54, and the state was 47. So those are the raw scores that led to an index score, and so if you average all of these out, it came to 73.2. And that was a score sufficient to have us listed, we were actually not 33rd from the bottom. There were other districts that were endowed academies and so forth, and other smaller districts, but they went to the four steps that I told you and ultimately identified us. The next page is, has to do with the growth that I mentioned. So you'll see, number one, English Language Arts, our baseline is 68.1. That's how well the kids did last spring, 68.1. We have to get to 68.6, and as we march our way, we march our way up to 75, but they give you a target, and then our index score will be based upon the percentage of that target met, not the percentage of the kids. But let's say the vast majority of our kids make 90% of the target, then we would get about a 90. It's not a yes/no for the child. It's an average, how well are we doing in terms of meeting these goals? The second one in math is, our baseline is 63.3, we have to get up to 64.2. Now, here's the growth. Our baseline was 60%, so if you take the average of all the students who took these tests, grades three through eight and grade 11, SAT now is the grade 11 high school test, and the APs and the IBs, you take all of those targeted growth, our students on average scored 60, got, not scored, achieved 60% of that growth. They want to see us get up to 63.3, at least by next year.
Excuse me, Dr. Grunier?
Yes.
Would you like us to hold our questions, or do you prefer to?
Yeah, let me just finish this, and then I'd be happy. And then the targeted growth for math, I agree. Chronic absenteeism, they want us to go from 11.3 to 10.8. The four-year cohort from 86.1 to 86.7. I need to do some research here, because if a student comes here and spends two years at Fitch High School and moves to Kings Bay, Georgia, and graduates from Kings Bay, Georgia High School, I don't know that the state of Connecticut knows that. So I'm just trying to figure out, where is that cohort? Because the students could very well graduate, but I don't understand the word cohort in this case, but I'll get back to you on that. When we reviewed this last night with the board, lots of good questions that came up. And then the last one is the six-year adjusted rate. Again, if somebody leaves Fitch and two years later graduates from some other high school, I'm not sure how they track that cohort. And then, then the last thing, really quickly, is we did in fact get $600,000. So we put a plan together, actually Mrs. Austin, who would be here explaining this, but she's ill, like many of our friends. We are going to look into the absentee. There are lots of factors that lead to chronic absenteeism. Everything, obviously, from illness to families taking extended vacations during school time, and, you know, 10 days is 10 days. It doesn't take a lot, a couple of bouts of the flu, and you're at 10 days. The second thing we're looking at is the Common Core standards, the academic, the actual framework of these tests, the S-Back tests. We have to look at the college and career-ready factors. I really don't understand that because the vast majority of students have. I think it depends on how we list our courses, literally in the catalog of study. We don't, we don't offer what they, what do they call those courses?
Basic?
Basic. We don't offer basic-level classes. We offer college honors, college prep, honors, AP, IB, early college experience, ECE, which is a UConn course. We offer a range of classes, but to say that only 52% of our students are taking those classes is a mystery to me, but I'll find out. And then lastly, we'll take a look at the graduation rate. And there may be, there may be some, some use of our funds to support students who are leaving our school, and we're also, we're also taking a really a hard look at what we think is probably, well, we know from National Studies, is the gateway class, which is Algebra I. If students don't do well in Algebra I, they tend not to graduate from high school. It is the one indicator, and so we have made a major effort to revamp our Algebra I curriculum. So we submitted, Mrs. Austin and I submitted a proposed budget to the Alliance office up in Hartford. They have to approve it, and then we'll come back to the board and let the board know what was approved, and then the board can take a crack at it as well. So we haven't actually started to receive the $600,000 yet, but once it gets approved, we will. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counselor Parker was first.
Hi. I was at the meeting last night, so I heard everything last night. But my question is, when did we do away with the general ed, general education in the schools?
Two years ago. You mean, basic courses?
The basic courses, which was called general when we were all in high school, or mostly.
Yes, yes.
But you've switched to college, so we're pushing students who may not be at college level. Does that affect our scores, too?
I don't, I don't think so, because we, well, what we've, we've made a major investment in the National Urban Alliance, which is a kind of differentiated instruction. So we, and we have classes on purpose that are relatively low, a low student-teacher ratio, and we provided some backup classes. So a student who formerly was taking a basic-level math was now given a college prep algebra and a essentially intervention class to support them.
How many schools did that National Urban thing? Because I know there's, when I heard about it, it was only a select few schools. Is it across the board that this training went through?
The training I'm referring to is at the high school and at Kathryn Koniewski.
And why is it not at the other schools?
Well, Kathryn Koniewski?
I understand it's a Title I, but it should be across the board if we're doing this, because if they're coming from another school and don't get the same type of education, and they come up to the high school, they're still behind.
Well, the, well, first of all, it was an initiative by the Kathryn Koniewski principal. She thought it was the most effective way. And then at the high school, actually before we did away with those classes, the high school faculty thought that the National Urban Alliance would provide instructional models. We do and can share those models with other schools, but it is a focused program that has, has been adopted by the high school, but we can certainly look into, it is, I must say, it's not cheap.
I understand that. It's just interesting that it's only targeted two places, and you have all the schools that it looks like they're not doing well. I just figured maybe there's an extra model that can help them along.
Yeah, okay. My analysis of the academic achievement is, we did better or significantly better than the state average. the state average, in almost every category. So, our scores, my conclusion is, which is why I gave you those scores, my conclusion is, Groton is not an Alliance District because of that. Groton is an Alliance District because of the absenteeism and because of that. I think the categorization of the college and career-ready. I, I'm really looking forward to the scores that are gonna come out next month. These scores, by the way, were based on two years ago, the fifteen, sixteen, but the sixteen, seventeen should be out by the end of February. So we'll see where we are there, but that, that's a, that's a great suggestion. National Urban Alliance to help our schools across the board. I'd have to take a look at that, but I appreciate your mentioning it.
I had a couple of comments tagging onto that. I mean, do you have D I coaches in all your buildings? That's something that you could do without being a part of the National Urban Alliance, if that's the concern.
D I is?
Differentiated Instruction, coaches and?
We do, we do.
So they're picking up the slack that perhaps?
Math and, and reading.
Excellent, excellent. And then, the question about your budget, it's gonna be submitted to the Alliance Office. Now, when you say the budget, you mean this, for the spending of the six hundred thousand?
That's right.
Okay, so it goes to the Alliance District first, then comes back to the board?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, this presentation, I'm sure the general public would love to see this. Can you post this online somewhere, please? Thank you. Are there other questions? Yes, Counselor Schmidt, and then Aubrey, and then Zepari.
I just wondered, under the chronic absenteeism, are those contiguous days, or are they accumulations throughout the entire year?
Cumulative for a year, yes.
Right, because sometimes a child could have a terrible illness, a cancer?
Right.
And yet that would count against the whole school?
Yes, it does.
Right.
Yeah, we, I tend to agree with you. Ten, ten is, I would not personally say that a child having ten days of a couple of illnesses throughout the hundred-eighty-day period would be chronic, but that's, that's the.
But that's their criteria.
And, you know, frankly, the state is really trying to push us, push the state. The State Department of Education is trying to push the state to make sure the children are coming to school, and obviously, we want that whenever possible.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Aubrey, and then Zepari.
What do you have in mind to work on the absentee problem?
The first step is, we're thinking about, we have in the budget to hire a social worker, that the first thing, we hope to do is actually investigate it. We're not sure, first of all, we're not sure at what level. I suspect it's probably worse at the high school, but I'm not sure. And, and then, we want to know why. Is it, we have children who are sick, and that may be the cause. We have children, we know, well, at least it comes to my attention, on a fairly regular basis, children who live, their families are in other parts of the world, and they go for weddings and so forth, but they typically stay for a month. And so, those, those sorts of absences, there was a time when we actually disenrolled those students, because they missed so much school, but the state said that's not allowable. So, I think part of it is, we have to study it. We have to figure out what the cause is, and then we're gonna address the cause, and I'd be happy to share that with you as we go. The State Alliance Office, this is a real partnership, I'm very impressed, and they come to us, we go to them, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a weekly interaction, and they keep saying to us, you know, have you tried this, like Counselor Parker suggested, you know, you might want to look into the National Urban Alliance. That's, that's why, a district of our size, almost, almost identical to us, about forty-eight hundred students, is Middletown, and Middletown gets a three million dollar. They call it a set-aside amount, a three million dollar, to do the sorts of things that we're talking about. But it only lasts for five years, so, of course, we don't, we don't want to put a lot of personnel into that, and then five years later be up the creek without the three million.
I haven't, of course, followed this for a while, because my children are out of school, but are we saying that when kids come into high school, it's pretty much courses that are gonna take them forward to college?
Well, we have, we have a number of programs. We have an allied nursing program that's very popular, gets, students get to be C N As at the end of it. We have an active business program, Charter Oak runs a bank in the school. We have a very exciting pre-engineering program, but it's really for draftsmen, called Project Lead the Way. We are expanding and working hard to be sure kids get those sorts of classes as well. And, and I think, in, in the year 2018, to say that there's a huge distinction between kids getting so-called college classes, like mathematics, and, and technical classes, or more career-oriented, is a sort of a false dichotomy. I remember talking to someone at the E B Welders Union, and the minimum requirement to get in the union was Algebra II. That, that is, Algebra II is considered a pretty high-level math class, at least it used to be, to me, and I realized, we need to make Algebra II available to all kids.
What if you have a student that comes in that you know just is not gonna be that kid that's gonna take algebra?
Right.
Or do well with it? What do you do in a case like that?
Well, we.
I'm probably asking something I should know, so I apologize for that, but I really don't.
No, no, no. Well, what else?
So the board has been paying a lot of attention to, you're right, not all kids are gonna go to college, but, you know, we need to get them prepared. And I think Dr. Grineer did a nice job at kind of explaining some of our more obvious programs. But one of the things that happened, actually, last night, Leanne, is that the board approved what's called Falcon Cafe. And what it's gonna be, I don't know if you, any of you have been able to go up and eat. I don't remember what the days are, but there's a Falcon Cafe where the students prepare the meals, and then seat you, and are in charge from the sort of soup to nuts of the, pun on words, there are no bolts in the soup.
Culinary arts program.
The culinary arts program. And we just approved a coursework where, once again, the goal is for internships, the goal is for the kids to get into figuring out how to order the food, how to, how to set the menus, how to do all of those things. So, I think that we are trying to really push for understanding that we have multiple different learners, and we have multiple different ways of sort of, what do you do when you go post-high school?
Counselor Zepari?
I have several questions for you, Doctor. The first I noticed as I looked through the data sheet that you gave us, with the exception of preparation for C C R and taking courses, and preparation for C C R in percent-passing exams, those two areas we seem to be particularly low in. But in all the other categories, as I scanned down the list, we're right near the median.
Yes.
In fact, so close to the median, I wonder if the difference between the median and our scores is statistically significant. There are so many variables involved in each of these, these categories, that I imagine it would be difficult to say that, the only way you can do is by giving a significant number, and then determining that that number is statistically significant to.
Right.
Chi-square, whatever.
You're a hundred percent right.
Okay. So, I don't know that they are. Now, the question I have for you is, how many schools are there that, school districts in Connecticut would be eligible? That is, how many school districts have more than two thousand students?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm gonna guess it's maybe a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five.
Okay. How many stu, how many school systems are in the Alliance?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three out of a hundred and twenty-five. So we're talking somewhere around twenty-five percent roughly. And we're saying a quarter of this, and yet, we are so close to the median in scoring in all of the categories that they consider. How did we get to be in the bottom twenty-five percent?
I've been trying to answer that question for the last month. I, I think, I think it's, frankly, I think it's because of the absenteeism and the college and career readiness and the passing of the exams, because you're right, we're right at the median. Academic performance is clearly not the reason we're here.
Well, the C R C, preparation, C R C exams, probably is academic performance.
That's, that's a policy that we will, we will address. That, that's a real, that was a problem that we've recognized, actually, earlier, and the board is taking action on that. That will be reversed very quickly.
My final question to you is, would you be kind enough to send me the dates on which you're serving dinner up there?
Yeah.
The culinary arts program.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's lunch, yeah.
I think it's Wednesdays.
Wednesday.
But I'll get to the date. Nikki also do the dates for Falcon Cafe.
It's a deal.
Counselor Franco, and then Marosik.
So, when your Alliance District, there's requirements that you're going to have to or suggested. I had seen that one of them's after-school help, possibly.
Yes, yes.
I know Fitch does it, they have the Falcon Academy, which is extremely helpful. But what about in the lower-grade schools? Do they have anything?
We, we have enrichment programs in the, in the lower schools. Middle schools have, we have rate buses for the students to get it from their, from their teachers. But we, we don't have, you're right, that was one of the suggestions, if we had received a fairly significant amount of money. And we may, well, of course, we're hoping, to not only have after-school programs of academic nature, but have extended summer. And extended summer would be, we think, would be a significant benefit for many of our children, because a lot of times, when, when you see the September to June growth, it's actually commensurate with, with peers. But there are some students, during the months of July and August, actually lose ground. Then they come back in September, but to a lower point in September, and they go through to June. So that, that notion of, of keeping a, really a rich summer program, you know, which would not be entirely academic, but would be perhaps blending in some recreation activities, with some reading activities, some STEM activities, engineering robots and stuff like that, that would be a great use, and we would, we would love, love to be able to use some of our funds. Right now, we're, we're really gonna focus on direct support for students. We also are buying some books, make sure the classroom libraries are up to snuff, and we're buying some, not teacher computers, but some student computers. Because the computers at the elementary school are, well, with the two new elementary schools, that's original equipment, so our newest computers at Katherine Konowski and Northeast Academy are getting to be eleven years old.
Because I know at Fitch, when guidance or academic, I mean, sports, they're watching over the kids' grades, and when they see they're having problems?
Yes.
They've actually contacted parents and said, hey, I'm noticing, John, he's not doing well, and we have Falcon Academy, and he can go there and get help for any subject.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be, because I know probably in elementary school, maybe, or middle school, a teacher might say, I'm here on Tuesdays. Tuesday might not be.
Right.
Good for the kid, but if they have somewhere they can go for any kind of help, and somebody there to say, hey, could you?
That would be, that would be something we definitely want to implement. That'd be terrific, that after-school help.
That's why, I guess it's Falcon Academy, so you can go for anything.
Yeah, just, yeah, thanks for mentioning. Falcon Academy actually is at the, at the high school, and it's actually students teaching students, and it's, it's really a terrific program, and I think it operates three days a week, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe so.
You're right, if athletes are not, are in danger of losing their eligibility, they're actually mandated to go there. So it, it's, it's a really helpful thing. But we could institute something like that with adults at the middle schools and elementary schools.
And another question about the attendance, what is the policy right now? Like, for maybe, are they semesters? How many can you be absent for a semester before you fail?
Well, there is, there is no, well, I'll give you the state law. The state law, they changed it. The first nine are at the parent's discretion. After that, basically, you write a note and your child is out, and that's, that's the end of that. Starting with number ten, there has to be, if it's for illness purposes, there has to be a medical professional. It could be a nurse, but you have to have a medical professional. So the frustrating thing about that is, the state allows parents to use discretion up to nine, but once they get to number ten, then comes our chronic absenteeism, and so, that's the first answer. At the high school, as you know, it's a period by period, and if students miss, and I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm gonna have to get to that information, but, but the rule is that if you get a certain number of classes, you're denied credit. If you miss a certain number of classes, you're denied credit. And ironically, I think the attendance is probably the worst at the high school, where they pay the most attention.
Right.
I don't quite understand that. So that's why we need the social worker to help us discern what's going on here.
Okay. And one thing I just want to say, so when you come in as a freshman, you're taking Algebra I? Is there, there's no other business, like, because I did speak to somebody at the school, there's no business math there?
No, that's right, that's right. Either they take Algebra I as eighth graders, many students take Algebra I as eighth graders, or they take Algebra I as ninth graders. And then they go on to geometry. There is some business math, but, but they go through that initial algebra to geometry, because that is very much on the S A T, we're of course trying to, you know, the, it goes back to the, what's a career in college-ready? Every kid in the entire state of Connecticut takes the S A T. Perhaps some of us, when we went to high school, certain kids could, they took the S A T and certain kids didn't. Now, everybody takes the S A T and everybody gets the score.
Everybody.
Everybody in the whole state on the same day.
Really? Things are changing. Okay, that's what I have for questions.
Counselor Marosik?
Yes, Doctor. These index numbers, where did you get them from? Did you give the information to the state, and then they came up with the percentages?
No. The state, well, we take the Smarter Balance Alliance Consortium, S P A C, S B A C, and those, those scores are scored by a company. It's a, it's a company that the state employs. So all the S P A C scores go to the State Department of Education, all the S A T scores, and by the way, the state pays for the S A T, for.
So you have access to all the backup information for these percentages?
Oh, yeah, right.
And you verified one or two to make sure that they, they were on target?
Well, truthfully, we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
It's.
Because it looks, these numbers look like they're cooked. They're very close to the state average. I'm not saying there's anything wrong, but it's, you know, they're right on line with everything.
Your, your level of skepticism is at least as high as mine. So I will, I definitely want to check on the college and career-ready, because I don't believe that only fifty-two percent of our kids take college and career courses. I don't believe that only sixty-seven percent of our kids go on to post-secondary training. We have about two-thirds of our kids go on to college, and we have another twenty, twenty percent or so that go on to technical training schools, post-secondary. And I'm sure those should count. So, yeah, I will, believe me, I will verify this.
Okay. Thank you.
Does you have another question?
I've been listening so long, I forgot my question. I guess I have got a lot to learn about it, but I'm, I'm kind of wondering, some of your programs kind of duplicating with the Votec School Office down here?
Well, the, I would, I would, well, first of all, the answer is no. The Votec system provides a very technically, vocationally-based program to prepare students to go, in some cases, in some cases, to go into technical schools, but to go, and to employ a trade. So, we don't have, we don't have electrical plumbing and that sort of thing. We do, we do have a small, as Ms. Watson mentioned, we have a small culinary arts, but our culinary arts is a class. So, kids who have a real passion.
We need to go to a tech school.
You know, Grass O Tech has a, has a full program where a student can actually earn a certificate. No, Fitch High School is. No, the, Fitch High School is, is a, is a, is a general high school and students take, must take and pass 26 credits. And they have to be four credits in English and four credits in math and, and so forth. I, I see it as, as a broad, a broad-based education. But we need to do, and Chairman Watson reminds me of this virtually every week, we need to do a better job with some of our, our students who are not going on to a traditional college. That, that I, I think is clear. I think it's clear across the country, actually. And it's hard to compete with the VOTEC
Thank you.
in that range.
I just want to say one thing and then we have Counselors Perry and Counselor Parker again. As far as the absenteeism, I'm not sure how it's handled at Fitch. I know it's probably, high school kids have a higher absentee rate than the lower grades, I would assume. Do you do like an automated robo-call?
We do.
Once the teachers take attendance in power school, the call goes out?
Yep, yep.
And then do you have a dean of students? That's who, in some schools, the dean of students is the one who follows up with the, with the absenteeism?
Yes.
Okay, so you have all that in place already?
We do.
And you still have a higher, okay.
Yeah.
I know it is an issue. And we've, at the school that I teach at, which is a technical high school, we've made a concerted effort to reduce the absenteeism. It is quite an effort to do that. It takes quite a bit of time of our dean of students making phone calls and consequences. You, you give the kid a detention, they can't do anything until the detentions are served. And, you know, that's, it's turning it around a little bit with one person that's really holding the feet to the fire at the high school level. I do recognize what you're saying about the, the families who are away for extended time. That does make it difficult. Do they include kids on AEP as well in this, or are they separate?
On what?
On AEP, the, the kids who are out of school and having a tutor meet with them at the library?
It's a good question.
Or in their homes?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Counselors Perry was next, and then Parker.
And the absenteeism, is this the number of students who have more than 10 days out?
Correct.
Or is this the, the total number of days out of school?
No, percentage of students who have 10 or more.
Okay, so if one student has 50 days out, it still would be only counted as one?
That's right.
Counselor Parker?
All right, I'm sorry. Three questions, real quick. What about absenteeism? What about the ones who have medical conditions who have to be out, not for illness?
Yep.
But medical conditions?
Right.
Is that accounted against them? Because some of them have to miss 10 or more days.
I think that's why the state gives you 5%.
But then that counts against?
It does.
Okay. Second question is, the C, the preparation for passing exams, you said AP and IB, it doesn't include the ACT and SAT?
I don't think those are passing. You, you can't get a passing grade on an ACT test or a, or AP, I mean, or SAT.
All right, so it's only, who's the AP and the IB?
And I think
But AP?
UConn ECE classes would count there.
Okay. Third question, and I'll be quick about it. You said you're going to revamp the Algebra I? Are you?
We already have it.
You already have? And when is that going to be implemented? Did that start this year?
Yeah, it did, it did.
Who did it affect? Because if, did it start for the eighth graders or the ninth graders, or did it start at the same time for both, if they're taking?
Same time as both. Started this fall.
Was there a cost to that?
Well, there was a PD in the summer, but not significantly.
Could you email me that info?
I'm sorry?
Could you email me that information about the cost?
What, oh sure.
And Counselor Oberon?
I'm just going to suggest when we talk again, maybe you could give us a list of your codes, you know, because you're using a lot of
I know.
Da, 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 and da, 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 da.
I'm really sorry.
That's okay. It's what you're used to, but we're, but I'm not. I could take you into the world of real estate and do the same thing, but
Yes, yes. I, I'm beginning to talk like my mother-in-law. I apologize.
The only other thing I was going to suggest, just for what it's worth, I, it's, I know it's a long time back, but I had the opportunity of being a bus driver for a while, which I actually loved. And there were a lot of things that I was aware of. And then I could go to the school. And I think if you have somebody that's really working on truancy, it would be good if you could have a program between that person and the bus drivers. Bus drivers are very aware of what's happening to their kids.
You're, you're 100% right.
Sometimes the bus drivers are a little hesitant to, you know, so you'd have to create that relationship.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we do and we'll reach out to them.
There are no other questions? Thank you very much for coming.
We're, we're going to a budget workshop and we'll come back and give you an update on, on that.
Yes, Chairperson Watson.
So I just kind of wanted to clear up sort of about the liaison committee. And so, well, what I realized is that I probably are, is the one that holds the history about the liaison committee. And so I believe, though I won't be able to be exact about the history, but a while back, a committee was formed between the town council, the Board of Ed, and the RTM, and the city, where those bodies would get, you know, members from each body. And it was a directive from the town council, I believe it was in your, yeah, it was in your tenure, that, that the, the committee would get together once a month with a set agenda. There was a, I think that there was, in the past couple of years, there's been like chair, co-chairs from two different bodies. And it would just be a place for members of all of those bodies to kind of come together and just kind of say, these are sort of one of the things that are happening. What I do have noticed is, is that Dr. Gner is coming to the RTM and is coming to the, I mean, has a standing referral. And I'm actually hoping to get John to come to a Board of Ed meeting just so that he can kind of reciprocate that on, on our end. So if, it really is up to this body to make a decision about the liaison. So I'm not committee. So I wasn't necessarily, and I apologize profusely for any confusion on my part, but I wasn't necessarily looking for liaison people. I think, I think what the, the board was suggesting is, is that is this a committee that serves as a, a good purpose? Or are we having those levels of communication now that maybe were not present a while back? And once again, that is for your body to determine, because it came from you. But I kind of wanted to give a historical perspective on that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We'll go to Counselor Higginson. He's the Chair of Personnel Committee.
Quick follow-up to Nikki or John, is that what we talked about on the Personnel Committee two weeks ago, or three?
Yeah, I think it's one of your miscellaneous and ad hoc points.
All right, so we did a point?
I was a miscellaneous, yay, I've always wanted to be miscellaneous. So, so once again, I just wanted to give, put a historical perspective to that, that I wasn't looking for someone to sort of be, you know, liaison to each of the buys and to go to all the meetings, but it was a way of just a, a committee coming together and with the possibility of hashing out, or kind of a better, a more seamless, is that the word?
Sure.
Seamless communication between people.
Do you have any more questions you need to clarify about it? Are we good?
We assigned, I've got to focus two or three people.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again for coming out. Thank you to all the board members that also came out.
Yes, thank you.
Board member Wheatlaff was also here. Sorry, I missed you the first time. All right, onward upward. So we have 2018-0018 Board of Ed, Groton Schools Custodian and Maintenance Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. I don't know if that's Dr. Gner, if that's your business manager?
Yeah, sorry.
That's you too? Okay.
Here I am, walking out.
I'm sorry.
So a little background, when, when we negotiated last spring, the, the custodian's contract, they made a request having to do with the pension. And because the pension is, is controlled by the town, we said that we would make the request, but we'd just have to refer to town council. So, so the request was this. When a custodian is laid off, and we have no one currently who is in that status, the, the person by, by pension rules must cash in the amount that he or she put into the pension immediately. And what, and what the, the association asked for was, if during the time, it's a two-year window to, to, on the recall list, if the person was brought back to work, that they would be allowed to put their money back into the pension. And right now, that, that's not true. So if somebody works for 10 years and builds up 10 years of pension, then the, they, they get laid off. If during the two-year period they came back, they would have to start at zero again. And so Mrs. Lapine spoke to Mr. Ryer from the Actuarial and Consulting Firm. And, and he said, based on the fact that you laid out, it seems that the cost impact would be either very minimal or perhaps zero. We do not see a financial impact for this. So the, the town would have this money, the person would be laid off. He, he or she would get the distribution, would, would get that pension money back because they're no longer an employee. But during the two-year period, if they were to return, they would like to be able to, dollar for dollar, if they got $5,000 out of their pension fund, put the, the full amount back. And they would have to put the full amount back and continue on, on that pension path. That's the request. I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Town manager?
I just wanted to mention our human resources director did review this and didn't see any issue with it.
Thank you. Counselor Morosik, would you like to read the resolution?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Groton Board of Education and Groton Schools Custodian and Maintenance Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Whereas the Groton Board of Education and the Groton Schools Custodian and Maintenance Association reached a tentative agreement on a successive collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. And whereas the Groton Board of Education does not have exclusive authority over the town's pension plan and does not have authority to bargain and/or approve modifications to the terms and conditions of the pension plan. And whereas the ultimate authority to approve changes to the town's pension plan rests with the town. And whereas the parties have reached specific tentative agreements on Section I six of Article four, selection, appointment, and layoff, which are cost-neutral. And whereas approval of the tentative agreements on Section I six of Article four, section appointments and layoffs are recommended by the town's negotiation, negotiators. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Groton Council hereby approves the party's tentative agreement on Sections I six of Article four, section appointment and layoff. I so move.
Moved by Morosik, seconded by Schmidt. Is there a discussion or questions for either Dr. Gner? Yes, Counselor Atwater. Counselor? You're next. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
Is there a time period during which, after which someone's pension is vested? You're saying someone's laid off at 10 years, they, they automatically have to take their pension back. Isn't that, doesn't one's pension gets vested after some of the years of employment? So that they, when they reach retirement age, they get their, they get some percentage of their, their full retirement benefit?
Well, yes, once they're vested, that would be true.
Well, when do they become vested?
I'm hoping somebody in this room can help me because I, I don't know the provision.
Finance Director.
I, I think that when you become vested, it means you're entitled to the money, which Dr. Gner is saying that they're entitled to the money. It's not, it's not, they're getting the money, it's just they're not getting it at retirement. But it's, but if you're early years in a pension plan, one or two years in your employee, you don't vest. And if you're then laid off or leave, you get nothing.
So there's a time period in which money is contributed on their behalf? And if they're, if they're laid off before that time period, they get nothing?
They get that money back, but that's it.
Well, what do they get back if they're vested?
Well, I, I would think if they're vested, they'd get the pension.
You, you would have to see what
These would be for non-vested employees.
And so we still haven't answered the question. That's, that was what my impression was before.
I think Cindy can maybe talk.
That was contradiction, pardon, Mr. Atwater. But if it was, if it was
Counselor Perry, would you like Finance Director Landry to take a shot at this?
Yeah, sure.
Just checking to see, I have to confirm it, but I believe the Board of Ed is at a 10-year vesting period.
She, she said that she believes the Board of Ed is at a 10-year vesting period.
Okay.
So if they were at 10 years and if they were laid off or left the board's employ, they could, they have a choice to either leave their funds in the pension fund or take them out. If they're less than vested in the plan and they leave employment, they have to take their contributions with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landry.
That's really the provision for, thank you, for non-vested employees, that if they get laid off during that two-year window, if they got reacquired. But, but I want to highlight to say that there's no one in this category right now. So it's sort of a moot point.
Counselor Atwater, you had, wanted to ask a question.
Is the reason that you give them the money and let them put it back in two years is just to relieve yourself of any financial paperwork or record-keeping?
Well, it's the town's pension. And so when they're laid off, the pension rules say they, they must withdraw all their money. And so the, the union members were arguing or requesting that if they came back within that two-year window, that they would be able to take dollar for dollar, put that amount in and continue to accrue, not start from zero.
Okay, but, excuse me. If they take the money or they're given the money, do they then have to put it into another qualified plan like an IRA or something?
No, no.
So aren't they taxed on it when they take it out?
I guess they are, yeah.
So when they come back in less than two years, if they want to put in the original amount, they have to make up the money they lost that they paid the government in taxes? Is that correct?
I guess I, I, I really don't. I, I'm not exactly the best person to answer this question. I, I think what they, well, maybe Cindy can help us again?
Come on down.
Can you repeat your question?
Well, if, if, if the distribution is made from the plan, because the money that's put in there is, hasn't been taxed, when they make the distribution, then they have to pay tax on it or put it into another qualified plan. And if they don't, and they end up paying the tax, then if they come back within the two years, in order to pull, put the full amount that they had in there, they're going to have to dig in their pocket and come up with extra money. Is that?
I do believe that's the case. I, I'm not sure of the intent of this, but I think if they were to buy back, they would not have to start with zero years of service. They're also buying back their years of service. So if they were here eight years, they left and came back, and within the two years, they'd start with eight years of service. And their pension would start, and they wouldn't have to start over at zero again. I, I think that's probably the intent.
Okay, it would, it would seem as though if the town held the money for the two years, then they wouldn't have to go through all of that.
But it is a condition, if you're not vested in the plan, that you have to take your, your contributions or return to you when you leave.
And, and forgive my ignorance, is this a true pension plan? Or is it a 401K or a?
It's a true pension plan.
The town manager wanted to add something, please.
I, I just wondered, could you buy a lesser amount? You know, if, let's say you didn't, you had tax, you were taxed and didn't have as much money, can you buy a lesser amount of years and buy in what you can? I wonder.
I think if the window was open, right now, the window is closed. So if somebody gets laid off and then comes back, they have to start at zero.
Right now, that is a good thing that I meant, yeah.
Right. Yeah, they could probably commit four years of the eight years. But, but, but at least they would have that. So, Counselor Atwater, you, you're right. Maybe they wouldn't have enough money to do the eight years. They'd only do seven years. Unless they did put it into a qualified plan, so then maybe they could
Could roll it back.
Put it right back in, right.
Counselor Morosik, then Franco?
Thank you. When they get laid off, Doctor, and they return after the two years? When they get laid off, Doctor, and they return after the two years.
Right.
Do they lose their seniority?
No. Not within the system.
Well, if somebody's in a senior position and they go, we're in real trouble.
That's true.
Councilor Franco?
It says here, I mean, they don't have to put all the money back. It says they're entitled to.
Yeah, that's right.
So, they don't have to put the money back. And I think when they take it out, if they take it out, they can be taxed as a penalty rate, or they can roll it into a different type of retirement account.
A hundred percent right.
So, although they have to take it out, they can just roll it over and not pay any taxes on it. And they're entitled if they're called back. They don't have to put it back in.
That's right.
So, it's an open option.
Right. That's what they're hoping for, an option.
Councilors of the fair?
It's not clear as written, but I would like to be sure that any employee who is vested is not required to take his money out. In the, in the, as I read this proposal, it did not specify that. It just said they would be required to take the money out. I would like to be sure that somehow they have the option, once vested, of remaining in the, in the fund.
They can.
I will accept your assurance.
All right, if there are no further questions, we will vote on the resolution at hand. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Finance Director Landry is coming right back because we are on to 2017-0303, FYE 2017 CAFR. And you received the comprehensive annual financial report in a little bundle, lots of reports and numbers and all kinds of good stuff that she can tell us all about. Director Landry, would you please introduce her staff once everyone's seated, please?
I will.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we ask that you use the microphones, please. I would like to introduce, this is Dean Morrison, she's the new treasurer, accounting manager. And I have Leslie Zoll from Blum Shapiro and Vanessa Rosito from Blum Shapiro.
Thank you for coming up.
And I just have a brief overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa.
Thank you.
Okay, you were, previously I had given out the documents, and there were six. There was the CAFR, which is the audit, state and single federal audit reports, an auditor's communication letter, a management letter, and the town's response to the management letter. And one of the reasons why do we do an audit or a CAFR, it's required by charter and as well by state statute. We have to publish a set within six months of the close of the fiscal year, by December 31st of each year. And it's used for, to meet several requirements. It's a communication or informational tool, investors and creditors use it, and this is the 24th year that we've prepared a CAFR. And the book, this booklet, there are three sections to it. The first is called the introductory section, and it includes a letter of transmittal, which gives some details about the town, the profile of the town, it gives the local economy, updates to the grant list, there's a debt discussion, there's also a copy of the CAFR award, NOR chart, and the principles, principles of the town. And then the second set, section is the financial section. It includes the independent auditor's report and a more in-depth management and discussion and analysis that's several pages long. And then after that is the basic financial statements that Vanessa will talk about, and then Leslie will talk about the single and federal audits. And the final section is the statistical section, which gives you 10 years' worth of historical data, 2008 to 2017. And then we also have the management letter, which Vanessa will go over that, and I have provided you my responses, that I'll be happy to answer questions about that when, when we come to that part. Any questions?
Thank you. No, I think we should probably get right to the report.
I'll turn it over to Vanessa.
Thank you.
So, I don't know how many people have the CAFR with them. I did a presentation which just kind of highlights the audit process, highlights some items in the CAFR, goes into the single audits with, which Leslie is going to go over, and the management letter. And then we're just going to talk about the new GASB standards and some industry updates. If you do have the CAFR with you and you have specific questions on a certain page, we could certainly entertain those questions also. Okay? Great. So, as far as the agenda, I'm just going to talk about the engagement scope and the standards that we follow during our audit. We did issue a required auditor's communication from the audit firm Blum Shapiro to those charged with governance, which is your council. So, you have that in the packet that Cindy sent you. I'm just going to, you know, tell you about the highlights of that communication. I'm going to go over the results and some financial highlights of the CAFR, and like I said, the single audits, management letter, and industry pronouncements. As far as the scope, we actually, actually issue a couple of opinions on the financial statements, the governmental activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information. We follow a couple sets of standards in performing the audit. We follow auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. We also follow government auditing standards, also known as yellow book standards. For the federal single audit, we follow uniform guidance standards and the state single audit, the general statute sections noted on that page. The required auditor's communication. Basically, in the notes to your financial statements, in notes, in note one, is where all your significant accounting policies are listed. There were two new accounting pronouncements adopted this year by the town, GASB Statement 74, which is the new OPEB standard, other post-employment benefits standard, and also GASB Statement 77, which now requires you to disclose any tax abatements that you have. There are some estimates in your financial statements, in every municipality's financial statements, there's estimates were required to talk about those. You utilize an actuary to calculate the OPEB asset and also the pension liability, and also a third party to calculate the IBNR or the claims incurred but not reported. Management calculates the allowance on receivables, the useful lives of capital assets used in determining depreciation, and also the landfill liability. So, we review those estimates to make sure that they are fair in accordance with the standards that I mentioned. We did not encounter any difficulties during the audit, we did not have any disagreements with management, management did not consult with another auditor or accountant as far as a second opinion. As far as the results, we've issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financial statement. Just to delineate the responsibilities on the financial statement, management is basically responsible for the entire CAFR with the exception of the auditor's opinion. So, management's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, which includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements to make sure that they're free of material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. And we are, the auditors, are responsible to express opinions on those financial statements. So, we conduct our audit in accordance with the standards that I mentioned earlier to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So, reasonable assurance means that we're not guaranteeing that everything in the financial statements is 100% correct. We don't test 100% of the transactions. Okay? As far as some highlights, financial highlights, entity-wide, your capital assets decreased about $2 million just because of depreciation. The debt for the town decreased about $6 million. That is due to payments on debt, and also your pension liability decreased. The general fund, fund balance increased 1.04 million. The unassigned fund balance is 9.6% of your fiscal year 18 budget. The results of the '17 budget for the general fund revenues were under budget 142,000, and expenditures were under budget 1.41 million. All of the governmental funds, which includes the general fund, which I just talked about, capital improvements, and the non-major fund, fund balance decreased 2.17 million. Your internal service funds, you have three internal service funds, fleet reserve net position increased 371,000, health insurance net position decreased 1.51 million, too many letters there, workers comp net position decreased 70,000. And then the last set of funds, which are your fiduciary funds, your pension trust fund net position increased 7.4 million, basically due to the good market conditions. You had increase in, in your investments of about 11 million in that fund. And then your OPEB trust fund net position increased 1.97 million due to the same reason. There are, as I mentioned before, two new GASB pronouncements. I put the page number for your information for future if you want to look at those disclosures. The new tax abatement disclosure is on page 48, so that lists the various tax abatement programs that the town has and the various characteristics of those programs. And then on page 59, the new calculation for other post-employment benefits is disclosed. There was always a calculation for OPEB in your financial statements. This new GASB standards put, put different parameters around the calculation, so the actuary had to calculate the liability a little bit differently. This calculation is more on a long-term basis, the other calculation was more on a funding basis, comparing how much you've contributed to the plan compared to how much you've required to be, be funded by the actuary. So, this new amount is going to be recorded on your financial statements next year. That's it for the CAFR. Does anybody have any specific questions on anything?
Councilor Atwater?
I have a question on, I guess it's page one of your, your report. Near the bottom, you, you give estimates of the net pension liability based on actuarial evaluations.
Yep.
Management of other net post-employment benefits, what you just talked about, so is there, I will be honest and say that I have not read everything in this yet.
Okay.
Is there somewhere that the actual interest rates that are used in those assumptions and that sort of thing available?
So, they're in, they're in the disclosure.
They are.
In the financial statement. So, the pension disclosure starts on page 49. So, you'll see what the discount rate is for the pension disclosure, and then the OPEB disclosure starts on page 59. So, that's where all the information, all the different assumptions as far as discount rate, mortality tables, et cetera, is all disclosed there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for?
I'm going to turn it over to Leslie to talk about the single audits and the management letter.
I'm going to start and just go over the results of the federal single audit. We are required under the federal, federal uniform guidance to complete a federal single audit if expenditures on federal monies exceed a threshold of 750,000, which the Town of Groton has exceeded. And so, based on the expenditures of those federal grants, we do, we are required to test certain programs that meet the threshold as well as some risk factors. And so, this year, we were testing the Impact Aid Grant. During our audit of the Impact Aid Grant, we have issued an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance in regards to that grant. We also have no findings, no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses to report to you regarding the compliance related to that Impact Aid Grant for the year. So, there's no findings to report on the federal single audit. The state has also rendered similar requirements via the State Single Audit Act. The thresholds are much lower, they're at 300,000. We're required to test 50% of the non-exempt grant expenditures for the year. We've tested the Town Aid Road Grant bus operations, the pilot state-owned property grant, as well as the municipal grants and aid. The requirements that we are asked to look at in terms of the state requirements, we did, we also, again, have an unmodified opinion on compliance related to all those grants, and we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control to report to you tonight in regards to those programs I just listed. If there's no questions on the single audit, I'm going to just reiterate one more thing. Included in the federal and state single audit, we also have a letter in response to what Vanessa was saying as the yellow book requirement. This is our report on internal control over the financial statements as a whole, and we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as it relates to the financial statements as a whole to report to you tonight. So, that was a clean, you know, the, the yellow book, there's no issues or findings to report on that as well. We do, as a service to the town, do issue what we call our management letter. These are just best practices, things that we want to bring to your attention that you can improve in terms of internal controls. They do not rise to that level of materiality that would be written in those reports I just discussed to you. Again, they're just best practices, dotting, you know, your i's crossing your t's in regards to internal control. And so, this year, we just wanted to mention, in terms of general ledger maintenance, there has been some significant, you know, some turnover within the finance department and other areas of the town. And so, we do want to recommend that, you know, checklists and written procedures are always good when there's turnover because there's something else to look at. The learning curve obviously would be easier if those written procedures were in place. We did notice during the audit that just some grant-related receivables and deferred revenues were not recorded in the general ledger. Again, they were not material in nature. There's some cutoff issues in terms of capital projects. I believe both of these cases are just in terms of communication from the various departments to the finance office so that they know what's going on, so they can record those timely. And then, the reconciliation between the general fund revenue posting and the subsidiary ledgers within the tax office, there were some timing issues in, in related to those postings. Again, most of that has to do with the turnover within the department, so we're just recommending that written procedures and checklists be performed, and you look at the overall fiscal year-end close procedure and make sure they're written down and formalized so that if someone coming in, brand new, has something to look at in terms of moving forward with those tasks.
At this point, I just want to interject, excuse me for interrupting. Director Landry submitted a memorandum to Manager Burt, and we all have a copy of that with the finance director's responses and how she's going to proceed with the suggestions.
Great. The second recommendation is related to the Board of Education. In terms of revenue recognition, they do provide the information to us in terms of an Excel spreadsheet of what the revenue recognition should be. There just needs to be better communication between the two parties in order to post those deferred revenues and receivables on the balance sheet. That balance sheet is typically maintained on the town side because the cash is held on the town side. Does anyone have any questions regarding that comment? And then we have one. And then we have one prior year.
There was one question, I'm sorry. Councilor Morosik.
I apologize.
Yeah, the suggestions that were made last year, did you see that they were implemented?
So we have one prior year recommendation left over from last year regarding fraud risk assessment, and that's been repeated in this document. I believe they're working on that but have not officially had that assessment.
I'm sorry. If you remember, well, Rich, you might remember, last year when we had the management letter, I came to the council about implementing a fraud tip line, and we decided to put that into the 18 budget, and it was approved, and that is handled in the HR department, and that has been implemented and is open and available for employees or anyone actually to use.
But councillor, we do go through all the prior year recommendations and make sure they've been addressed before removing them from this letter.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, the other one that, from last year was the risk assessment, and we did have a discussion about this last year. There is a significant cost associated with that, probably 25 to 30,000 dollars. So at that time, we decided to go with the tip line as a start, and it's something that we could have a discussion if the funds are available.
And last but not least, just to wrap it up, just the last page of the presentation, or second to the last page, is just a listing of the new GASBY pronouncements that are coming and which years that they're going to impact you. Next year, as I mentioned, Statement 75, which is recording the OPEB liability on your financial statements, the new calculation, we're going to implement that next year. As far as the rest of the standards, we'll, you know, visit those when, when the time comes. And just kind of an industry update to, you know, everybody's talking about cybersecurity, everybody's getting hacked, there's, it's getting, you know, I hear from my consulting people that it's getting worse. So Bloom Shapiro is having a free webinar on February 7th. I can give Cindy the information, she could forward it to you. And we're also having an elected official seminar on March 20th at our offices in West Hartford, and the topic is operational efficiencies. So we're sending out invitations to the elected officials in the state. So it will be a good, we'll have a presentation on operational efficiencies, but it's also a good opportunity for you all to get together with the other elected officials in the state and just compare notes and, and tips.
Thank you. Councillor Parker, or Councillor Franco, did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask what the overall financial position of the town is then.
So it's, there is many different statements in the, in the, in the CAFER, so it's hard to say in one sentence what the financial position of the town is.
Would you read the resolution for us, please?
Resolution accepting the FYE 2017 audit report. Whereas the town council has considered the annual audit of the town of Groton's finances, covering the fiscal year from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, and whereas the council has discussed the audit findings with the manager of the audit team from the firm Bloom Shapiro, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton accepts the files, accepts and files the FYE 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, the auditor's reports and management letter, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Parker, seconded by Councillor Morosik. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of accepting the financial reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess so that the planning department can get ready for, ready for their presentation and the councillors can refresh themselves. For 2018-0013 Tax Increment Financing Policy Presentation.
Good evening. John, good evening, everyone. John Ryder, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me tonight is Jim Demises from Camoin and Associates. Camoin has been doing work for the town for about two and a half years. They're the firm that actually did our market analysis for us and, you know, taking a, a big step back. I started working here a little over three years ago. One of our biggest, first efforts we did was to do a market analysis to understand where the town is going, what our future growth and development could look like, what is the market demanding? And we did that market analysis. We learned a lot about the town, where we are and where we're going. And one of the biggest recommendations of that market analysis was for the town to implement tax increment financing. Couple of years ago, about two years ago, the state made changes to the tax increment financing laws in Connecticut and allowed municipalities to control tax increment financing in their towns according to certain provisions. And we'll get into the, some of the specifics of, of that tonight. And so tonight, what we're going to do is, and, so we've been working with Camoin on the market analysis and the TIF for almost a year now. And tonight, we're going to give a brief overview of tax increment financing and then talk about, so there's tax increment financing, there's a policy that we're looking for you tonight to set a public, your next, the regular council meeting to set a public hearing date. Once a policy is adopted, there's a master plan that has to be adopted, and then after that, there are things called credit enhancement agreements. So there will be three different town council meetings over the course of the next six months where you will take individual actions, many bites at this apple of tax increment financing. So we would like for you tonight to get a good understanding of it, go over the policy, and answer any questions that you have about tax increment financing. So with that, Jim's going to drive us through an introduction of TIF, and we'll kind of tag-team this effort as we go through.
And with that, John, too, maybe you can, before that, just provide a little overview, too, of how we've been working with the advisory committee as well. Because we've been here doing this quite a bit and have, so some of you may have heard some of this, including some of you in the audience as well, but I just, we've been working with an advisory committee as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really good point. So again, we've been working with Camoin just on the tax increment financing for about a year now. The, the previous council said, you know, economic development incredibly high priority, and we began working on TIF. And as part of that, we wanted to do a lot of public outreach, a lot of education, involvement of our boards and commissions. So the town council created a TIF advisory committee made up of members of the community, property owners, as well as members of our boards and commissions. And every step of the way, we've been meeting with the advisory committee, bouncing ideas off of them as far as what we're thinking for policies and directions for our tax increment financing consistent with the state law. Also, members of the city of Groton have been involved in that process as members of the advisory committee, so much so that as we got further through this process, the city said, we also want to have TIF districts within the city. And a number of months back, we actually had an amendment to the contract with Camoin, and we're also working on two TIF districts within the city of Groton on Thame Street and Five Corners. You'll hear tonight a little bit about the two TIF districts that we're proposing in the town of Groton. One at the intersection of Route 184 and 117, the other one, Route 1, the Big Y, kind of Benny's general area. But everything that we've been doing all along, it hasn't just been staff or consultants, we've been bouncing these ideas off of this advisory committee to really get their input, so it's getting direction from the council and others as we move forward.
Well, good, let's get into it. I'm going to give a high-level overview. There could be a lot of details associated with TIF and some questions that you're definitely going to have. So we'll go at the high level, then we'll answer your questions as well, and we'll take it from there. So thanks. So we'll go through what a TIF is, what you can do with the revenues, how you've, like, goals that you establish as part of a TIF. We'll give you a, a revenue example, and it's just hypothetical, to show you what some numbers would look like if you were doing a TIF. And then we'll handle like the process, the next steps, and those kinds of things. So what is a TIF? So first of all, it's a local economic development tool. It's, while it was enabled by state legislation, it's local policy and it's a local program. You, as a municipality, have the opportunity to use this tool or not. And the state has guidelines for that, and the draft policy that you all have conforms to those state guidelines. But it's a, it's, what TIF is, it's a financing mechanism in which it allows some or all of future property tax revenues associated with new development to be used to support that economic development. So you have a development that, an area of town that has a certain amount of property value in that today. You then do economic development programs and projects that create new economic development and therefore increase the grand list within that district. This allows you to take some of those revenues and use them to support economic development programs, infrastructure, and, and I'll go over the different types of expenditures that you can do in a TIF. The tax benefits from the project help finance the project. They can help finance public expenditures, street, street roads and road improvements, streetscape programs, sewer, water, whatever you have for public infrastructure to support economic and community development. But they can also be utilized to support private development, to help fill the financing gaps on redevelopment, to partake in public-private partnerships with, which aid that development to occur, so it can be public or private. The, whatever, the original value that exists in a district, so when you set up a TIF district, there's already a certain amount of property value that's on the books. That money stays, that, that value stays as is, and that dollar, those dollars still accrue to the general fund. So we're talking about incremental value and revenues above that base amount. So these are new revenues, new value associated with economic development. These are developments that financially would not be possible but for utilizing a TIF district to create some of those public expenditures or public support and to help with some of the private development. They otherwise would not occur. So these are the types of things that you would fund through a TIF are, the market currently is either not taking care of them, you don't have enough support through the general fund to do these kinds of expenditures, and your goal is to grow the tax base, diversify the tax base, and so you're, you're intervening to help these programs, these developments to occur, this private investment to occur that otherwise would not occur.
So that but-for term, that's one of the two most important takeaways when we talk about TIF, that TIF is used to support projects that otherwise would not occur but for this financing method. And the other most important thing is this is not a new tax. So one, the two takeaways, I often say to people, but for TIF, that development wouldn't happen. Why has Route 1 not been redeveloped in 30 years? Because we haven't had programs like this where we haven't been able to help invest in those corridors, to help make up that financing shortfall. If it doesn't make financial sense for a property to be redeveloped, it's not going to happen. And unfortunately, that's the case with a lot of the older tired plazas that we have in town. There's, they're making money off of it as it stands now, maybe not as much as they could, and in order to knock down that plaza and rebuild, it doesn't make financial sense. The other piece is, TIF is not a new tax, it's not a special assessment. It's something that we utilize based off of new growth in the defined area.
Yeah, and along those lines, too, in terms of not being a new tax, the, the assessment of property within the district would still occur the same way. In other words, they're not like a special assessment process, or it's the same way across the town. And then secondly, there's no additional mill rate. Sometimes you've heard, heard of like business improvement districts or downtown districts, they might have a, what's called a special assessment. This is not that. It's the regular mill rate applied through the assessment process. It's just about what the revenues can be used for. So what can those revenues be used for? So these are, I'm just going to give you the sort of overview categories, and there's sort of other examples under each one of them, and it kind of depends on the development and it depends on the town, the town as well. It can be used to support infrastructure, I mentioned that, but that includes roads, sewer, telecommunications, both to benefit specific developments within the district or economic development overall in the district. Land acquisition, if there needed for development to occur, streetscape programs, reimbursing private developer costs, professional services that are required to make the development occur. An example of that would be like planning for brownfield redevelopment, or planning and engineering that has to occur in order for the development to take place and be approved. It could be, it could be used to support some of the TIF administration costs. I wouldn't describe the cost as extremely high, but there are some costs associated with it. They have to be tracked by town finance, they have to be assessed and tracked by the assessor, those kinds of things, and they have to be overseen, and there has to be some annual reporting as well. Mitigating adverse impacts within the district, so things that happen because of the development that relate to the environment or the community that you want to mitigate those impacts. You could use it for employment training. So in the case that you had a TIF and you're trying to support a company that's going to add a significant number of jobs, but job training is, is a problem, you can use the money for that. Environmental improvement projects and more. Essentially, and I don't want to be too generic, but anything that you can show that is needed to make the development happen and provides, that meets the goals of the town in doing economic development. So as long as you're specifying that in your TIF planning, that's what the revenues can be used for. So one of the first steps in passing a TIF is to have TIF goals, and these are the goals that were sort of vetted and developed and recommended by the advisory committee. So these are in your draft TIF policy that you have, and they include things such as grow and diversify the town's tax base through private investment, support economically diverse, long-term, stable employment opportunities for area residents, improve the quality of life and place to serve residents, residents, businesses and workers. So these, the improving the quality of life, they further specified that as being enhancing the town's infrastructure, creating housing opportunities to attract and support workforce development, establishing public spaces and cultural uses, improving transportation and recreation and infrastructure related to transportation and recreation, assisting established businesses in town and revitalizing areas or buildings in need of redevelopment, remediation or rehabilitation. Now, each TIF district doesn't have to meet all of those goals, but those are the goals that are set out that, in terms of why the town would want to consider using TIF. Next. This kind of jumps ahead a little bit, but I, I wanted to get, ground this a little bit in an example, just so you would have a financial example hypothetically of what a TIF would look like from a revenue standpoint, standpoint. So if you had a district and there was going to be an increase in assessed value due to a project, in this case, the example is $50 million. So this might be a particular project or a series of projects within a district of redevelopment or redevelopment of $50 million. And again, this would be development that through your policy would otherwise not occur unless you intervened to support it through a TIF. And then you apply the town's mill rate of 23.63 per thousand value. You're annually, you're going to generate, based on that mill rate, that value, you're going to generate just over a million dollars, a million point two, point two, one point, I'm sorry, 1.2 million dollars. So that's, that money, if you so choose to, could all go to a TIF, or a portion of it could go to a TIF. And that's the other important factor. It's not all or nothing. You can choose to say, we are going to take the new incremental value and the associated revenues, and we're going to use a portion up to 100% and capture that within a TIF. So it's up to the town through its policy guidelines and its TIF master plans to specify how much of the money will go into the TIF fund, and that which does not go into the TIF fund goes into the general fund. And then the, this just shows the breakdown of that 1.1 million dollars in the event that you also want to use the money to help developer or provide a rebate to a developer or a business owner in terms of sharing that revenue on an annual basis, and then I provided it on a 30-year basis. it on a 30-year basis, because TIFs are often done for multiple years, typically somewhere between 20 and 30 years. State law allows them for 50 years, but 50 years is pretty far out, and I have never seen one to be that long.
Our TIF policy recommends a 30-year horizon for credit enhancement agreements, which we'll get into in a minute, which is the mechanism for how we would do some of this cost sharing with the developer on a project. And it also recommends kind of that 50-50 split. It could be more than that if the council voted to increase it, but that, that's the general guidance of what we've been looking at within the policy.
And that 50-50 split annually is shown there. So annually, that produces just about $600,000 for the town, $600,000 for the developer for the life of the TIF, and you can see that that money would then be used for supporting development. It would accrue into the TIF fund over time annually, and it would come out based on what you specified in the TIF.
So that $600,000 would be used for things like streetscape improvements, sewer line extensions, improvements to stormwater, all within that TIF district. Again, stepping back, this tax income would only happen, this new $600,000, not only for what's to be used in the TIF, but also what would end up in the general fund, only if we have a tax increment financing plan and policy. So it's that but-for, this wouldn't happen. But-for TIF, we wouldn't see these revenues. We would just continue to get whatever the baseline taxes are on that property.
Next one? Locked up on the hold down? What you do now, John?
I don't know. Oh, there we go.
Couple of things on process, and then I also just want to make sure that we're gonna answer some questions. So who decides to create a TIF district? And if a developer is to be provided financing assistance, who, who makes those decisions? So essentially, all TIF districts, the master plans that relate to those TIF districts, they would all need to be approved ultimately by the legislative body, by the council. They are also subject to process of public hearings. They also are sent and referred by the council to the planning commission for an advisory opinion as to whether or not they meet the guidelines, if you will, and the spirit of the plan commission, of the plan of, of development, sorry. And so, and that's true of all credit enhancement agreements or any kind of agreements with property owners or businesses who are involved in a credit enhancement agreement or a tax sharing proposal. All of those would also be approved by the council.
So one of, oh, I'm sorry.
And I was, the only other point I was gonna make is, and they're not just willy-nilly. In other words, your policy that you have that is a draft now specifies the criteria. It says, we're gonna do it for these kinds of development, for these kinds of goals, there's gonna need to be this kind of information. That's all spelled out in your policy that you have as a draft.
So not all towns will adopt a TIF policy. The reason that we're adopting a TIF policy is because we're looking at more than one district, and we want to make sure that anything we do moving forward and in, concerning tax increment financing, is consistent with each other, so that we're not doing one thing in one spot and one thing something else. So this policy will set the framework for any future TIF master plans that we do. So again, we would adopt this TIF policy consistent with how we would adopt an ordinance in the town. It has to have a public hearing before the council, and then the town, town council adopts it. The process for the approval of the master plan is a little different and a little bit more lengthy. It's their referrals to the planning commission, to the economic development commission, and those have to happen with set periods of time, and then the council would have a public hearing and adoption of the master plan or master plans as they move forward.
The, the other part of that that's important for understanding oversight by the council is that the, any expenditures associated with the TIF are also part of the budget process. So in other words, yes, they're part of the TIF plan, yes, you're dedicating revenues to them, but ultimately, they need to also be approved by the town council. Now there are some exceptions to that where the council would oversee them, but you also have to meet the, any legal obligations that are specified in the TIF. So in other words, in the event that you develop an agreement with a property owner to give them a tax rebate, that's, that's a legal agreement and not subject to annual appropriation, because you have to meet the obligations because it's enhancing that developer's credit. So you can't just reneg on that at any time. It's a contract that the town enters into. And the same thing if, if, and I only say if because most towns do not want to do this, but if you were, for example, to issue bonds to pay for infrastructure, that's the same thing. In other words, you have an obligation to pay those bonds back in terms of annual appropriations. However, everything else, you have the ability to amend what you spend the money on, because you are the legislative body.
And these credit enhancement agreements that we keep talking about, so that's the agreement between the town and the developer that's negotiated by the council and the developer. And that's something that the town would only be giving a rebate back if the development happens, one, and two, the developer is paying their taxes that are above and beyond what the baseline assessment was of the property pre the TIF, pre the, the approval, pre-construction. So it's not, the credit enhancement agreement minimizes risk substantially to the town because if the development doesn't happen, we're not paying money back.
And then, it often gets asked, so we anticipated some questions, but one of them was, what happens if a project doesn't get developed or falls short? So sometimes you've, you've set up this district, you're hoping or you're working with a developer, and you're entering into these kinds of agreements, and is the town gonna be at risk? So the, the TIFs are meant to be structured in a way, and this is what your policy says as well. So we've taken that into account in the draft, which is, you're only, you're only spending money, including providing a rebate of taxes to the extent that those taxes are generated. In other words, you're basing the rebate on a percentage of new development that occurs. So every year, the assessor does the assessment of that property or that district, if you will, and then if there's new revenues in it because development has occurred, then that creates TIF revenues. If no, if a development stopped halfway through or partway through and the development didn't reach its full potential or never occurred, you're not on the hook for any of those expenditures. So just to be clear, that, that's sort of protects, that's risk mitigation for the town. So that covers those. I just wanna cover one more piece, 'cause I don't want to go through the detail line by line of the policy, 'cause I know you just got it recently, and you're gonna have an opportunity to go through it in detail. If you have questions tonight, we can take them. But I just want to give you the high level of what's included in a policy beyond what we've already been talking about. So each, the policy itself has the list of those goals and objectives. Those are unique to each town, although some of them are very similar, employment and so forth, and invest, private investment and diversification. The TIF policy specifies how you're gonna finance the economic development. In the particular case of your policy, you can, so TIF is a way to create monies, but then those monies can be used to, along with other financing mechanisms. So in there, we say that the town, the draft includes, it specifies that if you are to help a developer, it's gonna be through that credit enhancement agreement and not through bonding as a matter of preference. It allows you to do it should you want to do it, but the preference is given to working with developers specifically or businesses specifically through those sharing agreements as opposed to bonding. And it does have other language in there that says, the developer shall seek other forms of revenue first, they should exhaust other grants and programs like that, and they're not allowed to take a tax credit on top, top of another tax credit. So if they're participating in an enterprise zone and getting a tax benefit, they can't then top, layer this on top and take yet another benefit.
And, and along those lines, tax increment financing is not going to be a major funding source of the development. So that hypothetical $50 million assessed development, that might be $80 million of investment on the part of a developer, when there's only gonna be a million dollars or so, 1.2 million dollars a year in new taxes paid. So when you start thinking about the numbers, it's, over time, it adds up to something of substance to help make up that funding shortfall, but this is not a major funding mechanism of the project. It's something that helps make up the, the gap between reality and not reality of a development happening, or making a good development a great development. So I think that's something sometimes people think is, oh wow, there's this windfall to the developer. No, when, the numbers we were using was on something that was assessed at $50 million. That means that the developer has to get financing for more than that, because when you look at the difference between construction and assessment, there is a differential there. But again, a key point.
Just a couple more things that the TIF policy covers. It specifies how much of, of new value can be put into a TIF fund. And again, that can be, there's, there's policy guidelines that says it can be up to 100%, but then it also has guidelines for how much, how much you can enter into agreements with and provide a rebate of. It says as a matter of preference, you will do, you will rebate no more than 50% of the taxes for a development. It does say that that's a matter of preference, you can exceed that in circumstances in which there's shown to be significant economic and otherwise other significant benefits to the town. But at least gives you that guidance in terms of what that would be. It provides the guidelines for saying how, it helps you make decisions on how much to capture for those revenues and how much to enter into a rebate as well. And then finally, it tells you what the process is for approving the district. We hit on it a little bit. We said that there's an advisory committee, it's gotta go to the plan commission, but that's detailed in your TIF policy. And then finally, it details administration and reporting of the TIF. So again, TIFs are gonna be multiple years, and so it's important that you have annual reporting on what's going on in the district, how much investment's been made, how much employment, has it been meeting the goals, and those kinds of things as well. That's spelled out in the TIF. Then I'll just end on, before we take questions, to say that I think John, or in fact, I know John, has provided you some other information to help you. There is a sort of, an overview of TIF, the TIF talking points, if you will, and then, and then there's a Connecticut Main Street guidebook. So our firm, Camoin, worked on a guidebook for Connecticut Main Street on understanding and using TIFs. That's in your packet as well. Happy to answer some questions?
I'll start.
Okay.
I have, I have one broad concern and then two specific questions. Maybe it's not the time for the specific questions tonight, I'm not sure. But the broader thing is, if you could just address, there's a perception out there that the, the TIF is somehow going to be, the, the cost of the TIF, the abatements, the credit enhancement agreements, are gonna be borne by the normal taxpayer out there, and the businesses who have chosen not to fix up their plazas for decades on end, and somehow that it's unfair to the rest of the citizens of town who are gonna be bearing the cost of this. So if you could just address that first, is there any validity to that, or how would you counter that argument?
I, I think that's a great question. That's something that often comes up in thinking of the difference between TIF and a tax abatement, and we can talk about that for a minute. So first, I, I think it's something for, a good question for people to ask, but no, I don't think there's validity to that being a fact. But it's certainly a concern, we've heard that concern from a lot of people. So for example, if we think about downtown Mystic, when I first walked downtown Mystic, the sidewalks were lumpy, they were cracked, the street was in really tough shape, maybe five, 10 years ago. The town, working with the state, did the streetscape project. A lot of public money went into that. Since that time, in the short three years that I've been here, we've seen a substantial amount of new business development, restaurants. Mystic has changed a bit in that time because the public put money into the Mystic area. So you can start thinking about that as a public-private partnership. The Route One corridor, I think, is a great example that I think we have not made that, we meaning the state or the town, have not made that an area, is a high priority area for reinvestment. The road's in tough shape, the sidewalk's in tough shape, it doesn't look pretty. Our zoning is what our zoning is, but our zoning isn't something that's gonna drive economic development. So we haven't helped form that public-private partnership. So that's one of those great examples where it didn't make sense financially for people to put money into Route One because the, the market wasn't there, and it didn't make sense financially. TIF only works via new development. And again, it's new development that wouldn't otherwise happen. And TIF, I think, will actually help stabilize our tax base because we're gonna see growth in the grand list because of TIF, and without TIF, we wouldn't see that growth. Some of that money will go back into the district, which will improve the district and make it a nicer place. So the market analysis spoke of improving our sense of place in Groton, making our center Groton, downtown Groton, great places that people want to go. So through TIF, it's not just going to benefit the private developer, it's gonna benefit the community as a whole, and I think we'll see property values in that entire district go up once just a few developments start to happen.
Just one more thing to add on that too. When you get to the master plan level of the TIF, not the policy, but the master plan level and the details, that's where, in fact, we'll be doing this work as part of the master plan development as that proceeds. There's fiscal impact analysis that's performed for the town. In other words, what's gonna be the revenues generated to the town, what's gonna be the costs associated with that development, and what's, what's gonna be the net effect? So that you have a way of ensuring, or at least better understanding what the fiscal implications are of that development.
Today, we met with three developers, one in three different TIF districts, two that are in the town, one that are in the city, of projects that wouldn't otherwise happen, definitely at the scope, if at all, without tax increment financing. And that's gonna be new revenue coming to the town, and even if, depending on how that financial analysis goes, once that credit enhancement agreement between the town and the developer expires, it doesn't have to be 30 years, it all depends on how much the town wants to invest through that development into the district, then 100% of the taxes are going to the town. It could be utilized to improve, do other improvements within the TIF district, or it could go into the general fund.
And then the other two questions I had, maybe, maybe not the right time, I'll, I'll run them to you and you tell me if it's appropriate or not. When we're talking about the credit enhancement agreements or the revenue capture, is this something that is set once when we adopt the TIF policy? So say, for example, we say it's always gonna be 50-50 and it's gonna be X number of years. Is that set once, or is it something we can decide, okay, for this project, we're going with this percent, for this project, we're gonna go here?
Second option. So it's, we were shooting for a goal of that 50-50, but there might be instances where we say, you don't need 50. One of the things that happens as part of the TIF, if a developer comes in and wants to negotiate a credit enhancement agreement with us, we get to see their books, we get to see the numbers of what is it you really need, so we're not getting hosed on it. So there might be times where it's 25%, there might be times where it's 50, and there might be some times where you even go above that because it meets so many of the goals of the town, and that, and it might be for years one through three, it's 75%, years four through six, it's 50, and then it goes down from there. So there are different ways we can do it, but each one of those will be looked at individually by town staff, recommendation to the council, analyses done, and we'll be looking at it on a case-by-case basis, but that policy will be guiding us all the time through those decisions.
Thank you. Are there questions from any of the, Council at Water?
To follow up with, Mayor asked, is the, is the sharing set for the 30 years, or is it negotiable as you go along?
Negotiable as you, well, yeah. If we agree to a 30-year polit, credit enhancement agreement, then that's what it is. That could be renegotiated if the development doesn't happen at the, at the speed that they want, but we don't have to do it for 30 years, for the credit enhancement agreement or for the TIF district itself? I, I'm not sure. Was your question for the TIF district or for the?
Credit enhancement agreement is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so let me just talk too, because I want to make sure it's clear. So within a district, you can choose to do credit enhancement agreements. Those, those are individual agreements with developers or property owners. And the terms of those are individual per the business. So once they're a step, once the agreement is in place with one business or one property owner, that applies for the term of the TIF. So if it's 30 years, that applies. However, the terms of other TIFs are therefore also flex, they don't have to be the same terms of that. But once they're locked in as an agreement with a developer or a property owner, they stay in place unless, and there's provisions for this in your master plan, the- stay in place unless, and there's provisions for this in your master plan, the agreement that the, one or, one of the parties, in this case, the developer, doesn't meet the requirements, then the, you can terminate that agreement. But it stays in place, it doesn't fluctuate, and you don't get to vote on it each year in terms of what the terms are.
And, and I'm gathering from what you said about the credit enhancement agreement, that you're choosing that because there's less risk than using a property abatement or, or revenue bonds or whatever?
Exactly. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so a, a property tax abatement is a, is a very different tool. That is, we will reduce your taxes by X percentage for up to seven years, or something along those lines. And that doesn't necessarily equate to new investment in the district for public improvement. It might be related to, all right, it helps that single development happen in a building, but outside of the building, there's not really a lot happening. So we're not going to see streetscape improvements, we're not going to see, you know, the sidewalks or stormwater, or that grow to other things happening within the district. So a property tax abatement is something that is used occasionally. There have been requests for those in the time that I've been here, but again, we want to see the developers' books on those. We want to see the need and not just give money away. Tax increment financing is a much bigger tool. It's probably the best tool that we can have in our economic development toolbox.
And, and again, on the bond question, too, because you asked that as well, again, if used according to policy with the guidelines, it does, the credit enhancement agreement helps mitigate risk.
One other question, if I might. The chart you showed of the 50 million in, in the revenue, so I'm a new resident of Connecticut, and I understand with your individual property tax in your home, it's assessed at a certain value, but then you pay tax on 70% of it. Is that true with commercial real estate as well?
Yes. So that was just a hypothetical example, so in that, so let's just, I'm better at math when we use hundreds, so let's say it's 100, let's say that a development is actually built and has market va, market value at $100 million, automatically, the assessment is 70% of that. So it would be $70 million. I didn't deal with that in the hypothetical, only because at the end of the day, it's only what the assessor comes in at after that 70% is taken to account. So that 50 million example would only, would be true if the assessor already said, here's the property value, we know the market value is X, we now take 70% of that, and that's now $50 million. So yes, in Connecticut, assessments are based on 70% of market value.
In, in a couple of minutes, once we're done answering questions on this, a developer that we've been working with for about two years is going to come up and just show a few quick slides on a development that he's proposing in an area that is a proposed TIF district, and this development wouldn't happen otherwise but for the TIF. And this is a development that's going to be assessed probably at about $50 million.
Yeah, I, I may be wrong, but I seem to recall that the assessment I have on my home is a certain value, but the tax I paid was on 70% of that.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, so if you're saying here, the assessed value is 50 million, then it's only 35 million of which you're getting tax money on.
Right. What I'm saying is, I left that step out of here. It's assuming that the 50 million is 70% of what, what it was, but, but your, your, your reasoning is correct on that.
So, so that a hypothetical approximately $80 million, $75 million development is going to be assessed somewhere in that $50 million range.
Thank you.
Councilor Zepari was next, then Franco Morovsek and Schmidt.
I'm, I'm curious of that, are we protected from any liability when we, when we give one developer a deal where we have a CEA allowing 30% and another developer, we demand 50%? They're being treated differently. And for the, for government to treat different persons differently is discriminatory. Where's our liability there? Is there any protection in the statutes that protect us from such liability?
I'll, I'll start, both. I just want to be clear, I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer that from a legal perspective.
I am, and I can't answer either.
Yeah, here's what I will tell you. So, and again, this is not a legal opinion, it's a management opinion, if you will. So one is, you're still assessing the properties through the same process. So in other words, the way that you're valuing the property and the tax rate you're applying to it is the same. And then a TIF is a partnership and an agreement for certain levels of services and certain levels of performance that are unique to each of those agreements. So in other word, and you have specific goals and guidelines for doing that. So in other words, that's going to allow you to say to, to one developer, hey, what you're trying to do, you showed us the financials, we want to get these things done within the TIF district that meet the town's goals, therefore, we're going to enter that agreement with you. If you turn somebody else down and it's consistent with your policy, you're not discriminating.
And also, within our master plan, we'll actually have guidelines for the steps that we take for a credit enhancement agreement. There have to be findings of what the council looks at, and as Jim said, each application we look at is going to be substantially different than the last and/or the next.
That would be true. So like examples of why that might stand up, right? Again, not as an attorney, but think about it, you have enterprise zones, you have abatements, so those have passed that test as well. So, but again, because you're dealing with it on policy, guidelines and agreements that to meet certain performance standards, that's where your protection would come.
And TIF is not a right. People don't have a right to a tax increment financing, even if they're in the district. If we don't like what they're proposing as a plan, we don't have to enter into an agreement with them.
Councilor Franco? So there was a TIF advisory committee?
Yes.
And they endorsed this. Who was on the committee and how large, how many people were on there?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the list of people. And I want to say, there are probably somewhere 12 to 15 people, members of our Economic Development Commission, of our Planning Commission, I believe we had a member, two folks from the city, a number of developers, and there's been a significant number of town staff also sitting on this committee, not only from planning and economic development, but our finance director, our tax assessor, our treasurer, because all of these people are going to be involved in the day-to-day administration of this. TIF is not something that I would recommend in a very small town without much staff administration. This is a project that, once we implement it, you know, we have to stay on top of it every year moving forward, just to make sure we stay in compliance with it.
I just wanted to add on that our turn has also been involved in reviewing all the materials every step of the way, as well as I've been reviewing materials. And I, we regularly use TIF in Michigan, and I've had quite a bit of experience with it.
John's been going to our TIF advisory committee meetings, too.
And you think this is our path to economic development?
I do.
It's heavily used in other states. It's pretty new here, but it's picking up steam. We wouldn't be the first in Connecticut to be doing this.
I, I, I think this is going to be the game changer for us. I, I think for a long time, Groton has wondered, why, why aren't more good things happening? We have a great employment base with Pfizer, with EB, with the Navy, but only 20% of the people that work here live here. The other 80% are commuting because they're going to places that have a sense of place where there's reinvestment, and just the economics of things didn't work out here. We've seen a lot of disinvestment in Groton. We see a lot of great investment in our waterfront areas, in Mystic, in Groton, Long Point, in Noink, and, you know, the Avery Point area, but not a lot in our center of Groton, where we have a lot of our commercial. We've seen, you know, developments in the past, like the Crystal Mall happened, and the, the negative impacts that had to our retail. Now, people are getting away from the malls, they want to go back to Main Street, they want to go back to the Route Ones. The timing on this couldn't be better, knowing that EB is slowly ramping up, you know, we just saw, what, 16, 1800 people they hired in the region, and every year, we're going to see those numbers going up and up and up, and we've got to get ahead of this curve.
Councilor Morovsek?
Yeah, John, this is, this was a good lecture and a lot of information, but I'm wondering, do you give this to the, the owners, the, the people that own the retail stores, and so, they should know about this. Because, you know, to do a, a TIF with the, with the town-owned property may be easier than with some of the owners of property that we've dealt with in the past. And, you know, this could be a problem. I, I mean, I don't want to name names, but certainly you know about some of the problems we had, and I just think that, you know, you have to get these people on, on board before we go too far.
So as we're establishing some of the draft boundaries of the two TIF districts in town, one at Center Groton at 184 and 117, and the other at downtown, we actually did a direct mailing to all the property owners in the proposed TIF district, invited them to a public meeting. We had a number of people show up, and we went over what is tax increment financing, and a lot of folks were interested in how they could use this as a redevelopment tool. So this is something that we would use for a public-private partnership through development of private development. So when we're talking about public infrastructure, yes, there would be improvements in the right of way of sewer lines, of water lines, but the development is being driven by the private sector.
Councilor Schmidt?
Oh, I'm assuming that we establish the geographic boundaries for the TIF so that we know exactly what the containment is, and we would have the possibility of having one or two developers. We might have, you know, it might not be just one developer coming in, and we would be able to enhance that particular area and bring it back to life again in areas where people have moved away, they've closed their business, they've gone off, we have empty buildings, and try to reestablish that as a very viable, lively district in the town. And which one would be the TIF? Which one of the developers would be the person who would be entitled to be part of that TIF?
So I think, John, to help answer the question, it's like, maybe you can explain a little bit about how originally you defined, so in other words, there are some exceptions in other towns, but by and large, you're creating a district first in terms of an area of town. And like, when you had your market analysis done, that Camoin worked on, but there was, it was done a few years ago, there was identification of corridors in need of reinvestment and a prioritization of those. From that, and working with planning staff, you then sort of draft the boundaries of the TIF.
So the boundaries of the TIF include much more than one parcel.
Right.
It's, so, we don't have any maps right now. The master plans will actually define, which the council approves, will define the boundaries of each TIF district. So within the town proper, not including the city, we're proposing two TIF districts, the one at 184 and 117. We're looking at the entire intersection, all four corners of it, and going down the road a little bit. Each time a developer wants to invest a minimum of $1 million in their redevelopment, not including cost of acquisition, then they could come talk to us about doing a tax increment financing.
Any property owner or developer in that district.
Yes. So that's 184. Route One, it's actually, I think, a little bit of a bigger TIF district that we're trying to encompass, not just one property or, or two. So there'll be options for people to do this. We'll see, hopefully, some action on this, once it's adopted, a few months afterwards. And some of this, we might not see for a year, two years, five years. This is something that will continue to grow over time as each property redevelops and gets nicer. It's, I mean, it's like neighborhood revitalization, when you see one person put a lot of money into a house in a neighborhood that might be a little bit on the down and outs, other people start doing that also.
So I think that two areas are, are completely different because the Route One in town, it's like three central areas. And at the 184 and 117, it's like several different property owners, and so somebody would have to buy up all those properties.
No. No, so one developer could come in and deal with one property, and another developer could come in and develop five properties. But it, it, you don't have to just deal with one developer for the whole district.
There may be more than one developer per TIF district?
Correct. Yes. I mean, you could, if you, if you have 30 different properties in a TIF district, theoretically, we could be dealing with 30 different developers in that TIF district. And each one, if we entered into an agreement with them, there would be 30 different credit enhancement agreements.
Councilor Hede?
Well, we only enter into agreements if it gets to that point, if they've already, you know, exhausted all their financing.
Yes, yes.
Things like that. So the question that I have is, it could be theoretical, or it could be a practical application. So depending on when you want to answer it, you can answer it now, or you can answer it after the, or while the developer is speaking. So when you talk about an ongoing process of oversight, for lack of a better word, where you make sure that they're delivering what they're supposed to deliver, that we're getting what we're expecting, all that kind of thing, like on a year-by-year, I don't know, timeline, how would you measure success? Do we need to temper it back, increase it? You see what I'm trying to get at? Like, how do we?
Measure if this is effective?
Put down benchmarks and milestones? Exactly.
I, I think, for a long time, I, I think many planners, including myself, thought of, all right, the way we set up good economic development is, let's get the zoning regulations in place. And once we get those in place, that's going to make new development happen. We do the zoning regulations and we're still waiting. Why? Why are we waiting? Because that's setting the table, but it's not bringing the steak, or whatever it is, you know, the vegetables, depending on if you're a vegetarian. So what we then do is measure, are we getting development? So if we just change the zoning and we're not getting any new development, all right, things aren't working, we need to up the ante a little bit. If we feel that we're getting the right type of development, and again, each one of these agreements, the council is going to be negotiating and approving that. Every year, there's a reporting back to the council of, where are we with TIF funding, with the projects, with the program? You know, we try to come OPDS to the council every few months and give you an update on initiatives and building projects. Anything that is under a TIF, not only does it go through the council credit enhancement agreement process, it also has to go through the planning, the zoning, inland wetlands, and all those approvals, and then we inspect, we make sure things are being built according to plan. And I think the, the proof will be in the pudding of, if we're happy with the development, we're getting the quality of development and the rate of development. And if we feel that it's too much, we could always scale things back moving forward.
The, just to take it one, because there are other requirements, too, in your policy, just at a more, I guess, theoretical level, if you will. So the policy does, the, you will have, like, required reporting. In other words, both for the district as a whole, that staff will have to report, and then also, anyone who's entered into a credit enhancement agreement. That'll include, like, what's happened in the district, how much has been invested, what, which of the goals are, how are the goals of the TIF being met and measured? And then what's been the employment, those kinds of things. We tried to keep those robust, but not overburdened some to either the town in terms of reporting and tracking, or the developer. But they're meant to measure your specific goals, and you will be updated on those each year. And you can amend the TIF. Again, you can't amend legal agreements. If, if the agreements are being met, you can't just cancel those. However, if the TIF is underperforming overall, or the district is, and you want to make adjustments based on that, you can do that. And that's, the purpose of the reporting is to help you do that, and it's also because of the, it ensures transparency.
I'd, I'd like to piggyback on top of that. We've, we've seen locally, not necessarily in Groton, but in other communities nearby, where there have been great plans sold to the municipality, and then municipality bites, and then the development never follows through. So what is there to protect the town? If we enter into one of these agreements, it's kind of going along with what Council Hede was saying. If these things are not being met, can we, are we exempt, are we, is the agreement void, or how does it work?
So two levels. If, if you enter into an agreement, now, we're talking the credit enhancement level now, if you enter an agreement and the terms are being violated of that agreement, then you have recourse to terminate that, right? Through process, right? However, the other way is, and I want to be clear, this is very different than what you might read about in national press around tax giveaways and incentives, where it says, here you go, please do what, please do something with your property. The only way there's be, money is being generated is, and a developer is getting money back, is if they follow through on their development. So, and then there's, you're protected by the policy, you're protected by having a plan, but you also protect that by not entering into specific dollar amounts. In other words, you're not saying, we're going to give you half a million dollars back over the next 30 years. You say, we're going to give you a percent. You say, we're going to give you a percentage of the taxes paid on the development put in place. So those are your protections. And again, not that they're not, they're going to require reporting, they're going to require oversight, but there's plenty of sort of checks and balances in that process.
Counselor Parker? Thank you.
Two questions. Finance department and the tax assessors, how much extra work is this going to be for them? And is it already, does, is there a computer system that has to be added to it? I'm just wondering. Because they're going to be taking, am I correct in, assuming that they're going to be watching, doing the taxes on it, and also doing the TIF or the credit?
They will be involved in the credit enhancement agreement. Frankly, and what we would do, and we actually proposed in this upcoming year's budget, was setting a little bit of money aside, so that if we get a TIF proposal, we would be able to hire a consultant to be able to review that financial modeling, to give us the correct advice on what we should do when negotiating that credit enhancement agreement. Jim has worked on literally hundreds of TIF plans and negotiations, so that's something, working with his firm, we would do that, whether we do that indefinitely. And again, that's a cost we can charge an application fee as part of a TIF credit enhancement agreement application, and that fee can pay for our consultants to do the analysis. Yes, the annual reporting, that's something that staff would do, that my office, working with the finance office, with the tax assessor, would end up doing. This isn't much different than another program such as the Enterprise Zone and the reporting requirements. Again, there would be new accounts created, and just making sure we're keeping track of the funding. A little bit more work, yes, but it's something I'm sure they can handle as we can handle. And that's something, moving forward, we'd always just keep that in mind, and the staffing that we're doing. But when we're talking about the amount of revenue that's going to be coming in from this, that wouldn't otherwise happen. I don't see the addition of any new full-time employees due to this. If it ramped up and, you know, every single district was getting built out and applications for every property over the next five years, well, then, yeah, maybe we'd have to pick something up, but I don't see that happening.
Right. And my second question is, maybe I didn't see it, but towards the end, I saw the TIF review committee. Who would be on the TIF review committee? Is it going to be a group of people from different parts of their office, or?
So the TIF advisory committee is actually a committee that the council picked out the people for that, so that's something we could always revisit.
But I'm asking, because on page nine of the draft, it says TIF review committee. Is that the same as a TIF advisory?
It is. That was, I think that was a typo that we found.
We picked that up today. We have to make those edits to make sure it's consistent throughout the document. That's a good catch. It would be a TIF advisory committee. The other thing that I want to point out, it's also, built in there is also, obviously, the review and approval by the council, but also the Economic Development Commission as well, which is a current commission.
Thank you. Counselor Zephar?
This appears to be based upon taxes, property taxes. And property taxes are payable by the owner of a property. But the owner of the property is not always the developer. How do we encourage the developer who is not an owner of the property?
So it's a very good question, and there's different answers depending on the kind of development, like whether you're talking about housing or commercial, but I'll keep it simple in the sense of, like, let's just take a commercial development or a mixed-use development. So there's a piece of land, someone comes in and develops it. As you say, they may not own it over time, but they are the, but the agreement that you have with them will specify what happens in the event that that ownership gets transferred. So in other words, the developer's taking on the cost, they're taking on the risk in terms of financial risk, and so they would be the ones, typically, if it was a new development or a major redevelopment, that they would get the incentive. Then if they lease space out and still own it, that would somewhat be passed on to those, through those lease rates. Or if the entire thing was sold, then the credit enhancement agreement, which is done by the town's attorney, would specify what happens in those events.
Well, going, just going, if there's a plot of land, say, at the intersection of 184 and 117, and I were to lease it, I don't own it, I lease it, and I want to develop it. By the way, this is totally hypothetical, I have no intention of developing any land.
Sure.
But I want to develop it. Can I get a benefit from TIF in developing this land that actually belongs to someone else?
I think in that instance, the property owner would have to be part of the application process. Otherwise, there's no way to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with someone who's not paying taxes.
Yeah, because that property owner is still technically involved, because they're involved in the lease, so it'd have to be worked out between both the property owner and the person doing the improvement.
Well, there's no question that the property owner's property would be enhanced.
Yeah.
But the question is that the person that's doing the enhancement, does he actually get the benefit? And that's what we're trying to do, is encouraging developers to come in and do this sort of thing.
Director Reiner, our guest, raise his hand, I think he would like to speak, so if you'd like to introduce the gentleman.
Sure.
Raise his hand, twice, actually. He's been very patient, and we appreciate that.
So this is Mario Di Loretto from REITCO.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I didn't mean to seem so anxious, but this is an area that my company has studied, that we've worked on in other jurisdictions, that we were very excited when the state of Connecticut enacted the legislation, that we've been involved in the town of Groton, the property that we're going to show and share with you since 2005. There's a great dialogue going on right now, because it's a new concept. It's a new economic development tool that was only once reserved to the state of Connecticut. State agency was the only statutory party that could evaluate tax increment finance vehicles. So it really follows on the heels of a lot of changes, progressive changes that we're seeing in other New England states. The legislation in Connecticut is patterned from legislation in Maine that's been in place for twenty years, and that has seen very many successful projects and developments implemented. And I think Jim could kind of provide case studies for you, to just give you a little bit of context. There is a lot of, I think, misunderstanding that goes on, I mean, a lot of questions here. I mean, to be very, you know, blunt about that, it's not really a benefit for a developer. I mean, we all call the developer to developer. At the end of the day, the credit enhancement agreement is an agreement that the owner of the land has to be a part of, and it has to be an agreement that's going to run with the land for the term of the agreement. So if the developer was just a tenant and didn't have the landlord on board, or their lease didn't give them the right to get that enhancement agreement, then they can't do it. They can't just do it without the owner's consent, without the landlord's consent. So the owner of the property is going to be affected, because what essentially happens is, there's a demonstration that value's been created, that ad valorem taxes are going to increase, and so there's an allocation of what that increase is toward a credit facility that could last up to thirty years. So if taxes increase by a million dollars, and the split between the development and what it needed, and the development needed, say, eight million dollars, if it was that big of a project, then half of that increment, or five hundred thousand, you know, would be amortized over the then-market rates on a self-amortizing basis to cover that eight million dollars over thirty years. It's just pure mathematical, it's market-driven, it's, you know, reviewed and validated by third-party consultants that are retained by the town. So it's just a real, true public-private partnership that forges, where the private sector says, we want to do things, but there's some real structural limitations to being able to do those kind of things. So, I mean, I think we have a project here where I can give you a little bit of context for that, and, you know, to what our thinking is, because we've already shared this with John and his team for, really, John and his predecessor, and really, the longest member of the team has been Deb Jones. She's been here since 2005, and we bought the property that I'm going to share with you right now. We remediated environmental issues on the property. It was thirty-five acres on the corner of 184 and 117, and it was a former, like, a bus station, parking area, and service station, and painting bay. So there were some environmental impairments that were all remediated during our ownership and acquisition, post-acquisition. We also were the driving force behind what you now know is the MX zone regulations, the mixed-use zone regulations. We brought the concept of form-based zoning to the town of Groton, and we brought it, you know, in anticipation of our ability to develop this thirty-five-acre piece as a mixed-use development back in 2007. We got the MX zone approved in 2007. There have been a number of projects throughout town that have used that floating-zone concept. And our project never really got off the ground, because it took two years to get the regulations in place, and the type of development that we had conceived and the deals that we had in place fell through in '08, when some of the capital partners and operating partners that we had just couldn't, couldn't handle that. It just, the market changed dramatically. So we spent the last ten years, you know, and I'm going to just fast-forward to today, not sitting by idly saying, you know, when are we going to bring an application through? When are we going to come through? Every couple of years, we met with staff, we talked about where the collective heads for doing a large-scale master plan, mixed-use project were, and I never got the sense that the town was ready for a project like this. And we also learned a lot of different things in the last, you know, ten years as real estate developers. The world's changing, okay? Our kids are changing, the younger generation is changing, its attitudes, our culture's changing. Technology has had a tremendous impact on how real estate is built and operated and used, and how it coexists together. My company is active in projects in other jurisdictions where these mixed-use projects are dynamic, and they draw, and they succeed, and they thrive. And it's a preference for where people want to be. And so we feel like this is an opportunity to take advantage of a stimulus, an economic incentive package, because that's what it is. Without it, the deal doesn't work. With it, the deal has a chance of getting on. We're proposing mixed uses where some uses can be built, residential, multifamily housing. You're all familiar with the sound development in East Lime. It's been a great success in terms of its implementation, its absorption, its build-out, and its lease-at-market. Similar project in Old Sablebrook is just coming in line right now. These are the two newest housing projects that we've seen in southeastern Connecticut in the last fifteen years of any scale. So we're looking to conceive that type of a project, but not just that type of a project alone. With TIF, we can create a place. And the reason we're at that thirty-five-acre intersection is because when we studied the site, when we acquired it, we saw that the plan of conservation and development had called for a congregate, you know, and a more mass-concentrated development at that intersection as part of your plan. So it kind of guided us in our early thinking back in '05. I think it guided John and his team when they were creating these TIF districts, right? And, you know, one of the points you made is, it's discriminatory if you give it to one property and not the other property. It's really not. It's a decision that the town's made from a policy standpoint as to what areas of town they want to see regenerated. So this intersection is one of those areas, and we have a project that, without TIF, it's not going to work. And so, you know, if somebody that's not in a TIF district wants to get a TIF and can't, it's not discriminatory, because you're not discriminating. You're taking advantage of an economic development, statutory economic development tool, and they've adopted a policy around that, within the guidelines. When they say guidelines, it's really state regulations, it's really state law, what the state law allows you to do or not do. So they've taken, you know, the position that we want to see these areas of town developed. And, you know, I think if you integrate with the planning department and your land use boards, there needs to be a cohesiveness of opinion by all people as to how to go about doing these kind of things. So, you know, it's been, it's been a long time. You know, it's not arbitrary unless you're arbitrary. It's not discriminatory unless you really discriminate. But if you're discharging your duty in furtherance of a policy that's, you know, that's providing the incentive, it's not discriminatory. It's, you know, you're discharging your public function in accordance with the law. So I think, you know, in terms of the questions that were asked about, what kind of impact does it have to administrative staff and the assessor? Well, every project that gets built, okay, has to be evaluated, it has to be assessed. So the assessment process is done by looking at the value, the appraised value, which is the fair value. Okay? So that's the gross value, is the fair value. And then the assessment is seventy percent of that number. So the billing, the billing department, working with the assessor's office, will conduct an assessment on every project that gets built. So there's no special treatment to a TIF project. The administrative function of the assessor is to calculate what the value is and what the increased assessment will be as the improvements are built. And then it's up to the TIF application and determination of the agreement as to how we allocate those incremental taxes. So it doesn't create any more burden than any other development creates. You know, it doesn't discriminate on its face, it's, you know, it's thought through. So I think, you know, and it doesn't create more taxes. It's only based on the premise that something of value has been created that didn't exist before. So, you know, the policy they talked about was sharing fifty-fifty. You know, in the mixed-use project I'm going to show you, I mean, we have to provide as part of that application process what's called a fiscal impact study. So that impact study will inform the leadership and decision-makers as to what is the impact in terms of cost, the cost impact to the community for the new project? Is there additional fire services, police services, you know, whatever additional impositions are placed in the community? If the public roads within that neighborhood are required to be plowed by public services, you know, those things are impacts. So one thing you don't want to do is, you don't want to have a TIF award where the impact is actually greater than the amount that's generated for the town. It's a net loss for the town, even though they're getting this nice project paid over thirty years. So you cover your impact costs, and then you evaluate whether or not these are the financial needs of a project, and whether they can validate that. Without the incentive money, it couldn't happen. So I can give you a quick high-level how that could be looked at in a project. If I pick up here, so the site here obviously looks a lot smaller than it really is. It's a pretty big project. It's about, altogether, it's about forty acres of land that's all developed here today. We own about thirty-five of it, and the town owns all of this property right here. It's what's today now known as Farquhar Park. But today, this field doesn't exist, it's woods. This ball field exists. None of these, you know, illustrated concept improvements exist and supports exist. And this is basically an undeveloped green field, okay? Undeveloped or lightly developed, because most of the commercial development that was here occurred more toward the front. This is 184, 117 intersection, just to orient you a little bit. So we're looking at a development that's broken up into different mixed-use components. Commercial uses, which include office buildings, retail strip, with nice architecture, we'll show you some images, potential freestanding pharmacy, okay, but it's clustered, and then forty-five-unit, four-story housing buildings. And we'll show some, you know, precedent images of that with clubhouse, so it's a multifamily community tied into a commercial community. And then a final phase of potentially townhomes. That's what we're foreseeing right now. So we're creating a real community here. There's over three hundred residential units in the multifamily, thirty-five townhomes. We're enhancing a park. We're going to run a sewer line about a mile up from where the Marriott is along 117. We're going to enhance streetscapes, create sidewalks, perimeter walking area. So a lot of these improvements, the park upgrades, the utility upgrades, the streetscapes, these are going to be funded by TIF, okay? And then the TIF has to fund the gap in projects that could work. Like, a freestanding pharmacy could work at market. I could develop a CVS at market. I don't need a TIF for that. That stands on its own. I could develop the multifamily at market. That stands on its own, okay? I could develop the medical office, office building at market, because those kind of deals today stand... the medical office, office building at market, because those kind of deals today stand on their own. Because we're developing all of these kind of projects right now, and they stand on their own at market, okay, if the right dynamic exists, okay? It's the office building, which we feel is such a critical component to these types of developments, because it's what really brings people there. It's what brings people there. It's a live, work, play. It's what creates a little bit of demand for, you know, the retail restaurant mix here. It's what creates a vibrant, active, you know, ongoing community. So, it's very difficult to make an office project work at market today. The value of a market rate rent to an owner would only support about thirty-five to forty percent of the cost of a project of this magnitude. So, we'd have to subsidize that to incent the office user to come in. So, that's the type of, you know, putting the right mix together to make things work. If we could look at the phasing plan, and, you know, the implementation, you know, implementation risks. If we looked at phasing where, you know, we did a commercial phase where this building could be built later, a second phase, and when they calculate the TIF, what they do is they say, "How much does this building add in value? How much does this building add in value?" So, each building is valued. It's appraised and then assessed at seventy percent of that. The site improvements get appraised and then assessed at seventy percent of that. So, you start to look at the implementation of these projects. See, as soon as these projects are complete or a phase is complete, what happens is a certificate of occupancy is issued. And once that happens, you know, the property starts to get assessed at the full-assess value. And so, what the developer could do is, one of the finance tools and one of the recommendations, I understand with the policies, to pursue private financing for this, which statute allows, is to, that's when you would start to service that credit enhancement agreement. And why is that something that's very desirable in the market is very simple. Taxes enjoy a super priority lien on title. So, the taxing authority is first in line no matter what. So, every landowner has to pay his taxes first and foremost. Those people that get a mortgage, whether it's residential, in some instances even commercial, they have to escrow taxes. So that, at the end of the, you know, at the biannual payment or annual payment, depending on what the jurisdiction has, they could pay periodically. So, the tax, the taxes collected are valuable to the creditor that's holding them. They're more valuable to the creditor holding them than they are to the creditor that's in a first mortgage position, right? Like, the debt holder that's in first position is still subject to the taxes, always subject to the taxes. So, it's a credit arrangement. It's an inexpensive credit arrangement, and it's something that can be five-year, excuse me, ten-year, fifteen, under this policy up to thirty, under the state statute, under the enabling legislation, up to fifty years. So, some municipalities have enacted whatever the state says goes. They've crafted a policy that kind of sets some kind of standards and limits, and so, we'd have to adhere to what your local policy is. So, it creates, you know, it creates an environment where there's high credit that can be, you know, capital that can be attracted with certainty. If a development doesn't move forward, the town's not out of pocket, because the town only goes out of pocket for the tax when the improvements are actually built and they get to be taxed. And the stakeholders in a project of this magnitude, and we're talking about eighty million dollars of funding here, will probably have about twenty-five million dollars of private, twenty-five to thirty million dollars of private funding, and fifty million dollars of debt funding, and, you know, and then maybe another ten to twelve million dollars through the credit enhancement. And so, that'll get funded through the tax and the credit enhancement agreement, and then the mortgage, first mortgage debt spread through each project. So, I'm just trying to give you a flavor of, you know, how it would work on a project like this, how we could bring it to life, and how we could create a place, you know, out of a place that's, you know, been stalled. And so, you know, that's the best I can give you. We've been doing this for a while. We've been working with the town since the legislation passed. We understand there have been a lot of changes in leadership. We understand the charter revisions that are ongoing. And you know what? We just can't sit back and wait. You know, we think the time is good now, the capital markets are good right now. They're our demand drivers. Electric Boat is trying to attract people to move here. We've had market studies that are going to have to be updated, because they're dated now, but when we did them, you know, a year and a half ago, it showed with that EB growth that there is a demand for housing, newer housing types, varied housing types, because we have a real old housing stock right now. So, these kind of projects stimulate not only growth around it, but they force people to start thinking differently about their own properties and investing in them and investing for the long term. So, it's a, you know, hopefully, it's a pioneering project in town. It's, you know, it's got a very significant scale, takes a lot to put it together, and, you know, we're hopeful that we can build the right consensus with the town leadership to make this thing happen, so.
Is that the area where Chelsea Groton is? They just remodeled their bank?
Catty corner, I believe.
I believe so, yes.
North is at the bottom, south is at the top.
Yes. This is the northwest corner, so this would be heading to Leger. This would be heading towards the bridge on one eighty-four, and this one seventeen south would be heading down toward the Marriott, you know, and the Pequot Medical Center.
Chelsea Groton's kitty corner.
Yes. So, that's tax increment financing. Any more questions at this point? I know it's getting late. There are other items on the agenda.
So, you're asking for a public hearing?
So, yeah, what we're looking for is at the next council, the next regular town council meeting that you would set the date for the public hearing. So, I believe at the February sixth meeting that you could set a date for a public hearing sometime in February or at the March meeting.
So, it's alternative two in our packet that we received. Is there any objection to asking the manager to move ahead with setting the public hearing date?
No.
No objections?
I think we should.
All right. So, we're asking for the public hearing to be set. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I believe Mr. Reiner is staying put for the Economic Development Commission Annual Report Presentation, which is 2018-0014. And the commission members have all been waiting very patiently as well. Ms. Dowling is here, Mr. Bronk is here as well. Ms. Young, thank you. Good evening.
That was a great presentation. I'm on the TIF committee as well as Commissioner Mellon, who's here this evening.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I'm, anyway.
And I'm not sure if Sean's going to be able to pick you up either. So, if you could pull a little closer, please. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. My name is Susan Dowling. I am an Economic Development Commissioner for twelve years. I'm a prior chair. Also with me is Kathy Commissioner Young and Paige Bronk, who is the Economic Development Manager for the Office of Planning and Development Services. I want to first thank you, congratulate all of you in your elections for 2018, and all the hard work ahead. I know it's going to be challenging, but, you know, wish you a lot of luck. Also, I appreciate the opportunity for us to present our annual report. While you have it in your packet and all the information is there, it's important to us that we bring to life some of the key elements of things that we work on very, very hard during the course of the year. There's nine commissioners on the Economic Development Commission. We are actually adding one. We have eight now. We're adding one for 2018. Here this evening is also Commissioner Craig Mellon in the audience, and as well as Peter Legnos, Commissioner Legnos, and Commissioner Cody. And also with us is our liaison from the Groton Business Association, Al Valente. You know, I wanted to recognize that they've been here this evening as well. So, first, I'd like to just note that this is the 2017 Annual Report. And listed at the top are the commissioners, as well as the ex officio and the town council liaisons, and RTM and GBA liaisons. So, first, I just wanted to present, again, I understand you have this in your packet, but I wanted to just go through some of the key points that I think are really important in terms of what we do as a commission to support the Office of Planning and Development. We feel we play a key role in supporting the businesses and to try to drive the businesses and support them in ways that we think are relevant and helpful. First, in the highlights on the, on the report, the EDC Annual Report for 2016 was given by the Chair, David Precker, who couldn't be with us this evening, at the town council meeting in January 2017. The report was provided as an overview of the Economic Development Commission's activities, goals, and recommendations for 2017. Some of the key actions were the Economic Development Commission Business Outreach Program, which was created in 2017 to provide the opportunity for commission members to communicate with business owners in the community, provide support, and act as liaison to the Town of Groton Office of Planning Development Services. A brochure, which is also included, we created in your packet, it's actually not in a brochure form, but there's two pages that show illustratively how we provide this to business owners, and we created that to give to them so that they had information in terms of who we are and what we do, and the opportunity to reach out to the, to the manager, the development manager, so they know the contact person at the OPDS. So, the, and then, as well as the category list, identifying businesses by category was developed to use in tracking those contacted by the EDC commissioners. In your packet as well, excuse me, is the list, which you would note, oops, I lose that, a list of all the businesses by category, which was developed to use in tracking those contacted by the commissioners, and a bar graph as well, which is also included separately. Again, so it's included separately. And also, another, once the business owners are contacted, commissioners would submit a completed outreach form to be included in the EDC monthly meeting reports for review by the full commission. And again, we just included that in the packet to show what we use. We completed. We talk extensively with the business owners in person, and we tried to show the support, the active support by the EDC, and also make the, make them aware of the fact that they can contact someone within the town department so that they know that there's someone they can reach out to if they have any issues, concerns, elations, well, you know, anything that they can share with us and the department. The, so next, on the Economic Assistance Fund revisions, the EDC assists the town staff in the revisions of the funds guidelines to address application procedures, project suitability, targeted investment areas, eligible costs, submission and review process, and critical for award. The recommended revisions were adopted by the town council on the March seventh, on their March seventh meeting. The EDC provided economic development advocacy on behalf of the business community to the town council and zoning commission. This entailed ongoing communications and dialogue of matters of economic significance. The, which is the presentation that was just given, the tax increment financing, otherwise known as TIF. The EDC Commission, myself and Commissioner Mellon, as I said, he's in the audience this evening, served on the TIF committee and continue to serve and participate in meetings. The EDC has been supportive of using TIF to help strategically grow targeted commercial areas within Groton. EDC members acted as a community liaison to other boards, commissions, and community organizations. The representative volunteers were Commissioner Hatcher for the Eastern Connecticut Chamber in Military Affairs, the Commissioner Cody for the Groton Business Association, and the Commissioner, myself, and for the Mystic Chamber of Commerce, and Commissioner Young, sitting with me for sector, and Commissioner Mathune for the Norwich Chamber. We felt that that was important to really engage all commissions and boards to sort of bring it into, sort of more synchronized in terms of being, you know, one-goal-minded, in terms of working together. And that's one way we feel is the effective way to interact and communicate and be more engaged in all parts of the Town of Groton, as we know there's many parts. So, trying to make it, you know, the sum of the whole. We also had a meet and greet between the City of Groton, which is the point I just made. The Town of Groton Economic Development Commission was held in November 2017 at the Yukon Avery Point to promote working together to support businesses throughout the community. And these are one of our, one of our major initiatives. EDC members are engaged in promoting and supporting the airport development zone application on behalf of the Office of Planning and Development, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development. The DECD officially approved the ADZ on February twenty-second, 2017. Commissioner Precker, David Precker, participated on the committee for the logo branding process for the EDC. There's actually, I didn't have it in front of me, but on the, both on the TIF, I'm sure you've all seen it, but it's, it's, there's a lot of hard work that went into that, and it came out very successfully. And of course, our Chair of the EDC was involved as well, as I mentioned. The logo was finalized in September and was integrated into the marketing campaign and other promotional material. EDC liaisons reported to the commission at their regular monthly meetings, which included town council members Bonnie Nolt and Diane Barber, the RTM member liaison, Leanne Aubrey, she's here somewhere, and Al Valente of the GBA. We also have Aaron Brooks of the Groton Utilities, who was appointed as an ex officio member in 2017. We're also happy that we were able to have invited John Burke, the new town manager, and get to know him to our August third, 2017, regular meeting for an official introduction and discussions on future plans. It was quite a interesting, and shared a lot of the history of his successes and previous successes, and that was really important to us because we could become familiar with what his thought process was to see the future success of the Town of Groton. So, it was very, it was a very rewarding meeting. Thank you, John. The commission was engaged in supporting the Office of Planning Development in their goal to represent local businesses that would potentially be negatively impacted by the zoning commission plans to make changes to the Water Resource Protection District, the non-disturbance setback from fifty feet to a hundred feet. The EDC Commission has actively participated at several zoning commission meetings. The EDC also supported the OPDS goal to promote development of the Sealy School property. This also included supporting the specific zoning amendment for the property to allow the potential for multifamily housing as an option. EDC Chair David Precker met on a monthly basis with Paige, with the, at his office, to just be, have a creative forum whereby the commission would stay connected, and to the department's staff and their activities and goals as a part of the priorities of 2017, and ongoing. I don't know if you have any questions. I appreciate the opportunity to present our report. We feel that there's a lot, you know, it's a two-page report, but it's a twelve-month effort. And as you, being volunteers, as well as our commission, and we're all here late this evening, as volunteers, because we all have the same interest in seeing a successful community in the Town of Groton, if you don't have any questions, I'd like to turn it over to our Chair for 2018, Catherine Young.
Excuse me, Ms. Dowling. Councilor Heed had a question.
Of course.
Could I ask you to comment real quickly on, excuse me, I'm sorry, number twelve? There's, the commission plan made changes or recommendations to change the non-disturbance setback from fifty feet to a hundred feet around water resource?
Yes. And that was actually, that went through as far as, we were in favor of that not occurring in terms of the change to... not occurring in terms of the change to 50 to 100 in support of the businesses that would be impacted, and it was decided that the zoning voted to increase it to 100, 100 feet. Paige.
The EDC was quite active and engaged in understanding the issue, it's a complicated matter, and there was a determination made by the EDC that there were some concerns to our commercial districts, and also existing businesses and the prospects for the future, so they actually took an advocacy position opposed to it, but also were making suggestions that would potentially moderate the recommendation.
Does that answer your question? I'm sorry?
To a degree, I mean, I imagine there's some science behind the idea between 50 and 100 feet, or is there?
Actually, that was, the actual issue is that there was no science behind it. It seemed somewhat arbitrary.
And I think that, and not to delve into something where I have not the level of expertise in terms of that, but I believe that the 50 versus 100, it was always consideration on the non-disturbance distance that were already accounted for, so that's why we supported it as a commission, we felt that it needed to be really considered excessive in terms of increasing it to 100 feet. So, thank you for your question.
But the zoning commission did find reason to extend it to 100 feet, and I'm sure if we're interested, that the science behind it is available for us to look at. Ms. Young?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
I'm going to talk briefly about our recommended, recommended goals for 2018, and, not in the order that they're presented there at the bottom of your sheet, but I'd like to mention the second one first, and that talks about growing the Economic Development Commission Business Outreach Visitation Program. The market study recommended that we be active here in the town, reaching out to current businesses, and so that we could help them, to encourage them, to grow, to be successful. And that's what this talks about, this particular initiative. And Susan talked about how we did that last year, and that was kind of our jumping-off point. And we saw about, we visited about 15 or so businesses last year. This year, we're a lot more experienced with that, and I think you can view us as sort of like the SWAT team or the ground operations team to go out and visit a lot more of the businesses that are in town, to encourage them, to let them know about the business incentives that already exist, and any new ones that come online. And the brochure that Susan talked about for the Economic Development Commission is the equivalent of our business card, so we leave this with each of the businesses. Also, the town staff have been helpful over the last few years in letting us know about opportunities as commissioners to learn and understand more about business development, but specifically on the broader level, economic development. So we have had an opportunity to go to different workshops and learn about that, and one of the things that I learned this past year with the Connecticut Economic Development Association is that ideas like the business visitation program are not uncommon, in fact, they're very successful in other towns. So we're very excited, all of the commissioners are very excited to be doing that. The second goal that we have is to build on something that we started last year, which was what Susan talked about, where we go to the other organizations that are in our region and find out what's going on, to create relationships with them, and to help, hopefully, know what's going on, but also partner with them. And so, we're going to build on that this year and look out, to look for the economic development organizations that we can collaborate with as a commission. So, stay tuned, you're going to hear more about that, we're just getting that started. And then, finally, our last goal, and not necessarily in any particular order, because they're all equally important to all of us, is to actively support the economic development work of the Town Office of Planning and Development Services. And that really, we feel, falls into the advocacy role of promoting economic development. So we take our cue in many ways from what the staff discuss with us, whether it's John or Paige or our new town manager, we're very excited to be working with him, and so we feel very energized and we're excited to have a new commissioner coming on board, and we are also really pleased and feel supported by the town liaisons that we have from other of the groups, like the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce and others that Susan mentioned.
Yeah, I would like to interject, it's a good point you're making, is we would invite the, I believe we have someone that's going to be joining us as a liaison for the Town Council, and so that's very important, that tie-in is critical and very helpful, we found in the last year or so that we have been implementing that liaison position.
So, you can think of us as your soldiers on the ground, here we are, working hard, and we want to support you in every way that we can with regards to economic development. So, Paige, did you want to add something?
Purely from the administrative side, I think it's critical that we have an EDC, and working with this EDC is quite helpful to us. There are certain things they can do far better than we can, and it really takes a team effort. I've been here nearly three years, and the first meeting that was asked of me is what can we do to develop a better bridge between the administrative economic efforts and what the EDC could do? I would like to think that that's improved significantly, and we work well together on a daily basis, really, so I think the two are very much needed to move the needle in Groton from an economic front.
Councilor Rossick?
Paige, what happened, what happened to your sign on 184? I don't see it anymore.
Has it vanished?
What?
Has it vanished?
Yeah, it's vanished, it's gone.
I'll have to look, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Councilor Obray?
Well, I just want to say that I've been involved for a long time, and I've watched the improvement of this group, just so much. We have some very distinguished people that are giving their time, and the organizational end of it has been improved so much through Paige's assistance, and Susan has always been very dedicated to it, and Catherine is going to be a very, very good leader this year, and I just can't tell you all how much this group has improved and grown and become so much more organized under Paige's tutelage, I think, and I really look forward to what she's going to be doing this year.
Thank you, Leanne, and Leanne was also a prior EDC liaison for quite a while, and always a support.
I'm the historian.
That's right.
Councilor Zepari?
You've been visiting businesses in your outreach program, I presume you've learned from the business owners that there are some things they would like to see improved in the town to make to be more business-friendly, should we say? Have you compiled the list, and can you present such a list to us, or have you developed a, developed a plan that would meet the needs that these people have informed you of?
Yes, I would say that if I could generalize with respect to what they talk about, that they'd like to see happen, it has to do with the sense of place. And Paige can explain that a little bit better, and that's something that has come out of the market analysis, but it has to do with getting excited about Groton, providing more opportunity, more things for people to do, who live here, who work here, so that they stay here and spend their money here. Those are the general responses that we've been getting. But I'd like to take you up on your offer, because I was going to ask you to give us feedback as to anything that you'd like to see us work on, and giving you some specific feedback as to what we learn as we talk to the businesses is something we can do.
Okay, thank you.
That would be great, if, I'm sure the town manager would be willing to filter it to us when he gives us his weekly reports, if you get it to him, that would be wonderful.
Any other questions? Is that it? Thank you all, I'm sorry. Councilor Schmidt?
I'd say thank you for all of your efforts, it's so important, and I think that's what makes a town important to other people, and they want to live here and grow here, and what you do is very important.
Thank you, I think we're all in this together, all of us, so I think a collective effort makes for a great success. Thank you.
Thank you for your time to the community. Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Good night.
Thank you.
Being patient.
Yes, definitely. At this point, it is after 10 o'clock, so according to our rules, we need to concur that we're going to continue on with business. Having said that, we have some things that are time-sensitive, so I would urge you to let us get through the final three items, they should be fairly quick, so if we are all in consensus, we'll forge on ahead.
Can we take a little break?
We can take a five-minute break if you'd like.
I appreciate it.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break at the request of the council. To continue on with the last three items, 2018-0017, Nautilus Dock Funding, it's a Port Authority grant, and Mr. Bronck is here to tell us about that.
I think most had been aware that the Connecticut Port Authority had awarded the town the highest award in 2017 from their ship funding program totaling $730,000 to extend the Nautilus Dock. The purpose is to basically extend the water taxi service in the Thames River to this northern extent. It was always a part of the long-term plans to extend it to this point, but we needed the funding. We have multiple partners with that initiative, the most significant, of course, is the Navy, and we weren't interested in actually constructing this dock on our own, our goal was to secure the money. As the municipality, our role was to write the grant proposal, coordinate with the Connecticut Port Authority, and gain the funding, which we've done. So, once the funding was made available to the town, our next, our next step was to go and meet with the Navy, revisit our understandings, and thankfully, they've agreed to do their part, which is basically to take over the implementation of the project. So, really, we have two parts to this item, the first is to have the town accept the grant, the $730,000 from the Connecticut Ports Authority. The second part is to have an agreement with the Navy that involves the gifting of funding towards their implementation of the project. Clearly, we want to make sure that we have certain protections and understandings moving forward. They have done a lot of legwork on their end in dealing with their authorities to make sure that they can receive this funding. So I think things are working quite well, but we need to move forward with these agreements in actually receiving the funding and working with the Navy so that we can ensure the funding goes in that direction for implementation.
So we have two alternatives here, do nothing, or the second alternative is to approve the resolution that is in your packet, and this would accept the grant and then authorize the gifting of the funds to the Navy, according to the items laid out here as far as distribution and authorization of expenditures. Councilor Franco, would you like to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution to endorse the CTPA assistance agreement and issue a letter of offer of grant funds to submarine base New London. Do I have to say the acronym there?
No, you're fine.
For the construction of a floating dock, whereas the state Connecticut Port Authority recently approved the town's Small Harbor Improvement Project Program grant application to build a floating dock attached to the Nautilus Pier, and whereas the State Bond Commission approved the funding, and whereas the Connecticut Port Authority requires the execution of an assistance agreement to transfer the $730,000 grant fund to the town, and whereas the design and construction of appropriate public dock facilities attached to the existing USS Nautilus mooring pier would permit water taxi services at the location, and whereas water taxi service would allow the submarine force library and museum to serve as a key component of the Thames River Heritage Park, increasing visitation and visibility of the museum, and whereas the Navy is willing to accept a gift of the grant funds to be used for the design and the construction of the floating dock upon receipt of a letter of offer now therefore be, be resolved, the Town Council thereby endorses the acceptance of Connecticut Port Authority grant funding and the gifting of the funds to the sub-base New London for the design and construction of the floating dock.
You saw, second?
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilor Zepari?
I'd just like to say to everyone that may follow you, we haven't been worn down, but this is really a good idea, and I think we should do it.
I agree.
But we haven't been worn down by the passage of time in the evening.
I'd just like to say that I think this is great, because it's going to, you know, make that water taxi even more attractive than it has been, it's going to be in addition to the Nautilus, and it's going to be a real asset to Thames Street, and so I'm thrilled with it. Thank you very much for your work.
Councilor Heed?
I'm excited about the program, but I also hesitate a little bit, I would like to know how we know after the fact if this was a good use of money, like, how do we, again, benchmarks? How do we grade this as Monday morning quarterback, if it works, if it doesn't work?
Works in terms of whether we get it constructed, or works in terms of increasing ridership on the water taxi?
Well, I think the purpose of the water taxi is to increase tourism in the area, and to increase spend, and there are all kinds of multiplier effects. Tourism is, I think, our number-one export in Connecticut, aside from submarines and maybe helicopters, or whatever Skorsky makes these days. But like, how do we know, 730,000, it's just a lot of money, I realize it comes from the state, but I want to make sure we're not, you know, frivolously throwing it away, if that makes sense.
Well, I think our milestones, this has been a project that's been in the works for a long time, and I guess my quick answer is the number of partners that have been involved in this over such a long time with common goals, I think is probably my best indicator that this is the path to success. In all honesty, there are no guarantees, but I think this is something that many people have wanted, and even the state at a higher level realizes this is the right path, and that's how we secured the funding. There are other indicators and milestones that we can track as well, I know that water taxi does track their ridership, and it's increased significantly this past year. All of the communities on the Thames River are excited about it. One other thing I have to mention, I actually look at this as like a regional initiative. We have Preston and the developments upriver, and they're envisioning water taxi, I can actually see this thing growing beyond even Groton and New London, but I think that's just something we're going to have to track numerically and see if we can measure our successes over time.
The town manager wanted to?
I just wanted to note that Paige and I had a meeting with the Navy the other day too, and I want to mention how it ties in with the joint land use study, that right now, the bus, in terms of that bus route, that bus stop that is being talked about, the transportation hub, right now, the bus system goes along Route 12, it doesn't come over Crystal Lake Road, they would like to tie this in with the transportation hub so that you can get people onto the bus and visiting other parts of town, not just along there. And hopefully through our outreach program, we'll get some anecdotal evidence over time that, you know, as we talk with the businesses, that they're hearing that people are coming in using some of these types of other transportation.
Is the funding still there to finish the bus area there? I know the state funding was being cut back for I know the state funding was being cut back for transportation.
There's, it's still being looked, they're looking at their options right now.
Councilor Ross.
They're hopeful, though.
I mentioned that to the seat general manager, but I think he needs to have some more information on that.
And they have some other needs along that road for, whether parking, as well as, the big one is storage, and as they do some of the other stuff and possibly tap into some of the state funding for the Navy, that might be an option, too.
Councilor Franco.
So we're sure, the CPA is going to fulfill the grant? That they have the money, they're going to do it?
If they're going to do it?
Yeah, they're going to actually fulfill the grant, because the state's in...
Yeah, I think...
They're going to approve, through the bond commission, yes.
All right. And then, there's a section here saying that if the cost overrun, that Groton's on the hook to pay for it?
We'd have to approve any change orders in the plans in the first place.
All right, I'm just really concerned about that. So far, we're not...
We're not anticipating, looking at it, we're hoping, hoping to come under budget, but we're not anticipating anything.
Do we get the money if it's under budget?
Yeah, and part of what we're doing, too, is paying incrementally. We had heard it's not always easy to get the money back from the Navy, though they, I've been told that it'll be fine. But we're doing it incrementally so that as they need the money, we pass it on, and any left over, then we still hold it and then talk with the Port Authority about other uses we may be able to use that for.
Okay. And the last one, I was wondering, the Heritage Park water taxi, is that the only transportation that's allowed to use the dock? Or you're talking about possibly other boats coming in? Preston or, did you say Preston?
Well, I think it is for water-based taxi service. It's not intended for recreational boating. It's not intended for any commercial boating. Theoretically, though, I believe if there were, let's say, two different operators in the future, they would both be allowed to use it. But it's not for tie-up, it's not for overnight or anything like that.
But I didn't know if somebody else wanted to open their own little boat taxi back and forth or something? Is it just the Heritage Park taxi, or...
This is not, actually, that's an interesting question. We haven't necessarily explored that, but my understanding is that it is for water taxi service. It's not dedicated simply to the Thames River Heritage Park.
All right, thanks.
Councilor Schmidt, and then Councilor Overeem.
I just wanted to say that this project has been a very long time coming. Joe Hickey from the state of Connecticut was in charge of coordinating everything, and at that time, the Navy was not willing to have a dock put in at the Nautilus. And so the funding that they had put in place was used for renovating Fort Trumbull. Now, I think we're very fortunate that we have this opportunity, we have the funding, and we have the approval of the Navy, so I think that we would be well put to put this through.
Councilor Overeem.
I was just going to add, I think that actually, this is going back, what Rita's talking about, I think we actually saved quite a bit of money, because at one point, in order to do it, we were going to have to work with the railroad, and the railroad wanted a bridge built up and over, and that would have been very costly. And that was the only, only thing that was being discussed at the time, but Rita probably remembers. So I think that this is a lot better and serve a good purpose, and I think it'll add to the use of the water taxi. And as Paige said, this is just, it's going to explode, it's going to grow, it's going to be great. Very unique park.
Councilor Zepari.
Move the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made to move the question. It was seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, we are moving the question. So all those in favor of the resolution read by Councilor Franco regarding the acceptance of the grant and the gifting of the funds to sub-base New London, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
We're behind you.
So we're at 10:30, so we have two more items. Are we agreed to move on to 2018-0019 as it is a time-sensitive matter? Okay. So this is an agreement with the University of Connecticut for undersea supply chain consortium. And Councilor Heath is going to read the resolution for us.
I'll make a motion, the resi, well, no, rephrase that. Resolution authorizing formal agreement with the University of Connecticut regarding undersea supply chain consortium grant funding, whereas the town of Groton has supported and participated in the Thames River Innovation Place TRIP initiative with numerous partners, including but not limited to the city of Groton, city of New London, and numerous nonprofit and private entities, and whereas TRIP's targeted efforts achieved grant funding for planning and project implementation from CT Next Innovation Places totaling nearly $1 million to grow the region and attract the talent high-growth enterprises need, and whereas town staff serves on the TRIP board and is the project leader for the undersea supply chain consortium project involving direct coordination with the University of Connecticut UConn School of Engineering regarding the consortium's implementation, and whereas the, the slant, whereas the consortium project receives state grant funding through TRIP that is slated to follow through the town of Groton to UConn for implementation at the UConn Avery Point campus, including the hiring of UConn staff for the project, and whereas a legal agreement has been developed by Groton legal staff and reviewed by UConn, establishing a relationship for grant funding to be received by Groton and then reallocated to UConn for such consortium project-related activities, and whereas approval of this agreement will allow grant funds to be distributed in a timely manner for consortium project implementation, which will lead to subsequent state funding for TRIP, and now therefore be it resolved, that the town council hereby approves the proposed agreement between the town of Groton and UConn involving state Connecticut Next Innovation Grant Funds for the Undersea Supply Chain Consortium Project, I so move.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion, or would anyone like to ask questions of the manager or Mr. Brock?
Not a good project.
Agreed? Seeing none, I call for a vote on 2018-0019. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Thank you very much.
And 2017-0202, appointment to Noang School Public Gardens Task Force. Good night, thank you. Do we have a person that we are recommending?
Jen.
Jen.
It's on the very last page.
So is there, would you like to? No? Jennifer? Yes.
I can read it. I just find it for me.
Right.
Okay. Let's see.
The one that's got two lines.
Okay, this is just a person to be on the board, correct? Okay. 2017-0202, appointment to Noang School Public Gardens Task Force. Noang School Public Gardens Task Force member, Ernie...
Koshmider.
Thank you. Has resigned from the task force. The task force has recommended Genevieve Kerf to fill the vacancy. There is no set term for the position. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overeem, seconded by Marat. Say to recommend Genevieve serve for the Noang School Public Gardens Task Force. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. And consideration of committee referral items?
That's it.
That's it?
No, we have other business.
There was a motion to adjourn. If there was a second, we have to go on with that, so is there a second?
Yeah.
There's a second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously. Thank you very much.